Okay, we're live?
Yep, we're live.
All right, thank you. Okay, it is 5:02 PM on Monday, August 17th, and I'd like to call to order a special meeting of the Palo Alto City Council. Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Councilmember Cormac?
Here.
Vice Mayor DeBois?
Here.
Councilmember Philseth?
Here.
Mayor Fine?
Here.
Councilmember Niss?
Here.
Councilmember Koo?
Here.
And Councilmember Tanaka. Seven present.
Great, thank you, Clerk Meyer. Just a couple housekeeping notes. So, the very last page of the agenda has dial-in instructions for anybody wishing to join and comment on items tonight. Because of the heat, there may be potential brownouts or power outages. If so, council members have a dial-in number. They can use their cellphone to join or potentially Zoom on their smartphones. However, if the cell towers lose power, we may have to deal with that as it comes. Quick reminder, we need four council members present for a forum. That can be by video or phone, and we do need voice votes for all votes tonight. Any other comments from staff, council members? Okay, so we'll deal with it, and let's hope the power stays on and everybody stays cool. Our first item is a closed session, public employee appointment for the city auditor. Do we have any members of the public who wish to speak on this item?
Any members that wish to speak on the auditor item? Please raise your hand. Mayor Fine, there's no raised hands.
Okay, thank you. I will move that we go into closed session.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments on this, or should we just vote? All right, starting with Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeBois?
Yes.
Councilmember Philseth?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Councilmember Niss?
Yes.
Councilmember Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. We are scheduled to be in closed session for about two hours, so we'll be back out at about 7:05. Thanks, everyone. Session's no reportable action. So, let's move on with the agenda. Next up is Agenda Changes, Additions, and deletions. I'll just note, item four, a public hearing on accessory dwelling units has been moved out. Any other changes? Mr. City Manager?
I believe that is it.
Okay. Let's please move on to oral communications, where any member of the public may speak to an item that's not on the agenda. And if a clerk would please help write their comments.
Sure. Any member of the public that wishes to speak to an item that is not on our agenda this evening? Please raise your hand. At this time, we have four speakers. The first is Jonathan Licky. Jonathan, go ahead.
Hi there, I'm Jonathan. I'm an entrepreneur who lives here in Palo Alto for five years. I am stuck with my family at home, and that's great, but the internet is not great. And so, I wanted to come in and say, fiber, please. And I got fiber back in 2006, I believe, in Sweden, when I lived there. And that was absolutely fantastic. AT&amp;T and Comcast, they liked to promise things, but failed to deliver. And so, I would kindly request the city to do something about that, specifically fiber to the premise, which is, it's easy to talk about fiber, but it's not all the same. So, that is my request. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jonathan. Our next speaker is Matt Bartholomew, to be followed by Mary Ellen White. Matt, go ahead, you have two minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, you have two minutes.
Great, thank you. This is Matt Bartholomew. I've been a Palo Alto resident for 15 years. My issue is similar to the prior speakers. We've heard proposals for fiber optic being delivered to residences, and I'm here to represent a strong yes for that. I have been led to believe that we can also offer support from emails, if we collect emails from people that are not able to attend your council meeting. So, if we could get some advice on that, that would be great.
Thank you, Matt. Our next speaker is Mary Ellen White, to be followed by Rebecca Eisenberg. Mary Ellen, you may have to unmute from your side.
I'm sorry, I'm here to talk. I'm sorry, I'm here to talk at the 2353 issue.
Okay, we'll mute you for now. And you can come back later. Our next speaker is Rebecca Eisenberg, to be followed by Joe Rimsa. Rebecca, go ahead.
Thank you. So, I actually want to speak about the closed session item. So, I tried to do that before the closed session, but couldn't, didn't, I guess, wasn't, didn't get a chance to get that through. So, technically, I think I should be three minutes, but I'll try to get this done in two anyway. So, as to the closed session, so my understanding is that what you were doing there is deliberating about which firm, which corporate firm you're going to hire to take on the auditor function. But the thing is, is that if you're considering a firm to take over the work of a job that's an internal function, or just considering a firm anyway, as I'm sure you're aware, that is not subject to protection, concealment from the public under an exception to the Brown Act. It's only if you're considering an individual. So, I guess I'm asking you, if you're considering a firm, I'm sure you are aware that you're obligated to share those bids with the public. And I encourage you to do so, because I don't think that that issue is really controversial. If you are considering an employee, which is actually what the agenda says, the agenda says public employee appointments, well, a firm can't be an employee. But if you are considering hiring an individual or promoting from within, then yes, it's subject to an exemption from the Brown Act. But, I'm here to say, I really hope you're not hiring a firm, that hiring a firm is the cost savings that you're apparently proud of saving of $250,000 in salary and benefits, is actually not saving the community anything. First, the audit function is something that we actually should be investing more in, not less. Second, it sounds to me like possibly you're firing a staff member, which means you would be terminating an employee who's a member of our community, and causing unemployment in our own community, causing someone in our community to lose their job, is not a cost-saving. That individual no longer has the ability to care for his or her or their family. It should never be, and thank you for letting me go over, by the way.
If you can just sum up, Rebecca.
I will sum up. I will say that it is not a benefit to our community to force a member of our community to lose their jobs in order to outsource work that our community members are doing to a corporate firm that is most likely headquartered elsewhere, that is shipping money from our community to outside our community. Regardless, I think the city, the community deserves a clarification whether you are evaluating an individual or a firm, what you did in private sessions. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Rebecca. And our final speaker is Joe Rimsa. Joe, you have two minutes.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I too am calling in support of the Fiber to the Home project. My family has been, have been residents of Palo Alto for over 18 years. And when we moved here, it was, it was known that there was an opportunity for fiber to the home to happen, and I think it's about time that that could happen, particularly in light of everybody being at home, working from home, and school at home. So, anything that needs to happen there, I'd really like to know about what we can do to support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that was our last speaker for oral communications.
Mr. Mayor, quick. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, just a quick one. One of the speakers asked about email. Just wanted to let people know, we're soon to get a lot more public participation, which is great. People can certainly email the council. A lot of people sometimes put out surveys and send us petitions or survey results, and people are free to do that.
Absolutely correct, thank you. Okay, so we've finished oral communications. We now move on to minutes approval, action minutes for August 3, 2020. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to the action minutes?
Any members of the public that wish to speak to the action minutes, either raise your hand or dial star nine on your phone. Mayor Fine, there's no hands up.
Okay, I'll move the action minutes for August 3. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, going down our vote roll, Councilmember Philseth will be first. So, for the August 3 action minutes, Councilmember Philseth?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Councilmember Niss?
Yes.
Councilmember Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeBois?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. We now move to the consent calendar, which has one item, item number two. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak to our consent item?
Any members wishing to speak to the consent agenda? Please raise your hand or dial star nine on your phone. Mayor Fine, there's no hands up.
Okay, we now return to council for questions, comments, or motions on the consent agenda.
I'll move the consent.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So, moved and seconded by Vice Mayor DeBois and Councilmember Cormac. If there are no further questions, start with me. I'm a yes. Councilmember Niss?
Yes.
Councilmember Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeBois?
Yes.
Councilmember Philseth?
Yes.
Okay, our consent calendar passes unanimously. Mr. City Manager, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council. Well, needless to say, this has been a busy last few days. But that said, I will provide a brief synopsis of some pending items of interest to the community. Let's see, okay, thank you. Let's go to the next slide. Again, much of this really not a surprise, as everyone is experiencing the heat and also issues around our electric system. But that said, I'll walk through this quickly in the interest of providing up-to-date information. First, in terms of the heat advisory, the anticipation is that we will have through Thursday this heat advisory, as well as current red flag warning, certainly leading to the importance of our community conserving as much as possible energy and also ensuring they're taking care of themselves and their loved ones. First, the potential for statewide rotating power outages will continue throughout this week. Would note, as we've all received our primer or refresher, as the case may be, in the role of the California Independent System Operator in setting the balancing between demand, meaning the demand for electricity and the contracts with suppliers of electric generation. And here we are, unfortunately, having to address that imbalance and given the extreme statewide heat spell that we're undergoing, the need to conserve and ensure that we're doing what we can to make sure that we can keep the lights on, quite frankly. Our utilities department is reaching out to customers for voluntary load reductions. In fact, thankfully, has received cooperation from employers, large employers in town, that will hopefully be able to minimize the likelihood of rolling blackouts. The next phase is to continue conservation citywide. And so, our utilities department and all of us are urging customers to continue conserving through managing thermostats, air conditioner use, as well as turning off unnecessary lights and minimizing the use of major appliances during the peak periods. We do have additional information on our city website under our news. Next slide, please. Then, to deal with the heat as individuals and taking care of our most vulnerable, we do have our cooling center open tomorrow at Mitchell Park in the afternoon from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM. We will, as always, in the current environment, be observing safety protocols with social distancing and face coverings required. More information on this is available at our website under cityofpaloalto.org/coolingcenters. Next slide, please. And on the broader issue of our pandemic, recently, our county public health officer, Dr. Cody, has indicated that cases do seem to be stabilizing, but unfortunately are stabilizing at a very high rate per day. As such, continued vigilance is necessary, noting our continuing public messaging to wash hands and wear face coverings wherever you are in public. We have noted that the trends have shown an increase in cases among young adults. So, certainly an area and cohort for us all to pay attention to. Would note that last Friday, we had our testing pop-up program that the county has been putting on throughout Santa Clara County. We were able to have tested more than 600 individuals, and that the county will be back here in town on September 11th and on the 25th, so upcoming dates. The county is conducting these pop-up testing, as they refer to it, throughout the county. And so, there are other dates and locations available on an ongoing basis. Next slide, please. Also, just to note, upcoming council activities. Next week, you will have a special meeting on the topic of recent equity, with reports from the Human Relations Commission update on its review of the eight can't wait practices, as well as reports from the city council ad hoc committees on a variety of topics. Would note, last week, that the city, our city's Human Relations Commission did hold a listening session on the topic of Black and Brown community stories. This is tied in with our hashtag Palo Alto Speaks effort, again, being coordinated by the Human Relations Commission based on referral from the city council to put together stories and history and current experiences of our Black and Brown community members. That report will be coming back to the city council once complete to share stories. You can go to our city's website, cityofpaloalto.org/palosaltospeaks. Also note, along the ongoing discussions of race and equity, that the Palo Alto Library will be hosting a virtual conversation with the author of The Color of Law, as well as hosted by a member of our Stanford faculty. This information will also be, or is also, on our city's website and cityofpaloalto.org under our news. Next slide. And other, other news, local and national, in terms of removal of United States Postal Service blue mailboxes. Community members have, had contacted the city, as well as, I know, we've been observing postings of notices on blue collection boxes around Palo Alto, as well as, I believe, other cities throughout the nation. We did receive confirmation from the postal service today that this, the removal that had been in the works has been delayed until further notice. We're also aware that Congresswoman Anna Eshu will be hosting a press event at the downtown post office. This is not, I think, inviting members of the public to attend, but nonetheless, good for community members to be aware that our congress member is going to be holding an event downtown tomorrow. Clearly, this is an issue that has gained nationwide attention, and certainly one that we will want to keep our eyes on. Then, more locally, and more on the good news side, our Community Services Department has issued its online version of the Enjoy catalog with modified information regarding ongoing classes, as well as a variety of programs available to the community. And that is, once again, on our city website, cityofpaloalto.org/Enjoy. Next slide, please. And I believe, final, final slide here. Upcoming, really next phase in outreach on our Rio Grande separation work, we will be launching later this week, on Wednesday, a virtual town hall. And this is really breaking some new ground for the city, and I believe for outreach in general. In this town hall, a virtual town hall, you will recognize it as it has been rendered as our Mitchell Park Community Center Adobe room. I believe it was some form of Minecraft. I have no idea how they do this type of thing, but I think it was quite a, quite an undertaking. And you will, I think, again, find this meeting room familiar. And again, we'll be hosting this town hall over the course of a few weeks in order to gain public input, as well as allow people to experience up-to-date information on the alternatives being considered, provide, ask some questions, get some updates, and provide information on a on-demand basis over the next few weeks. So, I believe next week, as a part of manager's comments, we'll provide a demo of it, so that we can allow the council community members to actually walk through this town hall meeting room and, once again, get this information in a pace and a manner that is really individualized in whatever area you'd like to focus. And information on this is available at connectingpaloalto.com. Excuse me. I believe that's our last slide, but if you could confirm. Very good. That concludes my report for this evening. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers.
Thank you, thank you so much, Mr. City Manager. I see Councilmember Niss, Cormac, and then Tanaka.
So, make sure I am not on mute.
You are not.
So, Mr. City Manager, once again, I find our testing process so frustrating. I don't know about any others, but I went on just to see if I could get an appointment last Friday, and it kept saying, no appointments available. But they did say I could have gone down to either San Jose or to Gilroy over the weekend. Supposedly, we have many, many testing sites available. If only two are available on the weekend. I just find that incredibly disappointing. Given the number who actually showed up last Friday, which was either six or 6:50, some phenomenal number, and we're not doing it again until September 11th, I think that, no matter how often we listen to, whether it's, you know, our public health officers, whether we listen to Joe Smith, whomever it may be, I was on a call with Cindy Chavez and Joe Savini on Saturday morning, and it's, it is a continuous message, get tested. How does one get tested when it's that difficult to get tested? So, I realize you don't have any answers to this, but I'd feel remiss if I didn't say it. And also, I think the public should know that it's not what we're doing, I don't believe. I think it's that the county simply cannot seem to get their act together. And that much was said on Saturday morning. I don't think you were on that conversation, Ed, am I right?
Well, it has been an ongoing conversation, Councilmember, as you point out. And I think perhaps this is a good segue to note that the county certainly trying to gain additional participation by our private healthcare providers, and that I believe we should be seeing more visibility to that campaign over the next few days or week.
I think we will. I think in the meantime, though, we have to keep beating the drums, because this is, it's just not acceptable. You, we wonder why somebody is asking about fiber to the home tonight. I think people are finally just so bored out of their mind, they're saying, gosh, isn't there something else? So, it's, we're going on six months at this point. It's very frustrating. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember, Councilmember Cormac.
Well, I'm going to pick right up on that. The last time we saw the testing, we also had August 28th. How did, how did August 28th disappear as an option? It was every other week?
I believe this is, that was an error. I believe it is August 28th. So, my apologies for that.
Okay, excellent, we got one date back. Well, I agree, you know, every two weeks. I know one other thing that the county has communicated, and this certainly makes sense in the broader context, is they are focusing the testing in areas where there are the largest outbreaks. And we have been fortunate so far in Palo Alto to not be the source of that. So, that's an explanation, it's not a defense, but I just want to say that, so people don't think the county isn't, you know, focused on where, you know, it's urgent. But I agree that after this many months, we, we should be better coming along. And then, I wonder, Mr. City Manager, if you could just go, go back to the first thing you talked about. How many outages have we had so far, starting Friday night here in the city and various neighborhoods? I mean, just round numbers, it's sort of hard to keep up on, next door.
In town, I believe it is the one. And we will have, we've got our Phillies director.
Magically.
Magically, perhaps Mr. Bachelor could.
Councilmember Cormac, so we've had actually two outages. The one that happened on Friday, and then we also had one from a lightning storm that happened on Saturday mid-morning that hit a top of a pole, and it was in a backyard easement in a customer's home.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Councilmember Tanaka?
So, yeah, thank you for your report. I, you know, I think firstly, a school for a lot of people, for the kids, for the Palo Alto State Perfect School District. And so, my kids, you know, at home, learning online, as I'm sure a lot of other people, right? And, and so, I just was curious from the city manager, if you could maybe talk a little bit about, you know, I expect all, all forms are on Zoom, very internet challenging, we're all looking for gigabytes. And I think that's why we had three calls tonight on this. And so, I guess, you know, I think we want to try to encourage more higher-speed internet. I think that's been a, a big need, but even right now, with the work from home and COVID situation. So, I, I don't know if you could talk a little bit about our, or maybe this is a future agenda item for you and the mayor to talk about, but I think it's becoming, it's looking like it's not a short-term thing. It's me, you know, this is something that's going to be around for a while. And so, I could tell you, you know, as a parent of two kids doing online, and my wife is online, and I'm online, we're all zooming together. It's a bit crazy, so I think that's important. Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember Tanaka. This is a larger conversation, so this would be a good item to put for a future agenda, rather than continue with that conversation here, because this is city manager comments, which is intended for short announcements. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Councilmember Cormac, Councilmember Tanaka. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Chicago. Let's move on to our action calendar for tonight. We have two items tonight, item two A, a quasi-judicial matter on 2353 Webster Street. And item number three, Utilities Advisory Commission recommendation on our electric supply portfolio. So, let's start off with item two A, if planning wants to take it away.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I believe Rachel Tanner will be reporting for staff. Oh, and Rachel, you are muted.
Got to have somebody on mute.
So, I'll go to the first.
Great way. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, good to be with you this evening. We have our manager of current planning, Jody Gerhart, who's been with the city for quite a while. Very fortunate to have Ms. Gerhart and her skills here. She will be presenting on the item tonight. We also have a presentation, I believe, from the applicant as well. And so, we'll do staff presentation first. And we also have staff planner Emily Foley with us, as well as our urban forestry staff and members of our public works team available for the question and answer and discussion period. So, I'm going to turn it over to Jody, who's going to share her screen with the presentation.
Thank you, Rachel, for the introduction. Emily will be sharing her screen, and I will be giving the presentation. And if you can just make that large, Emily. So, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Again, my name is Jody Gerhart, I'm the manager of current planning. The item before you tonight is 2353 Webster, which is an IR approval, and it has been appealed to city. The item before you tonight is 2353 Webster, which is an IR approval, and it has been appealed to city council. Next. So the home in question is approximately 2,900 square feet in size. Over 3,000 square feet is allowed. The home is also proposing a 1,600 approximately sized basement. And there is a 72-inch oak tree that is located in the rear yard. Next. So staff has been reviewing this project for some time. We did give a tentative approval on December 5th of 2019. There was a timely request for a hearing, and that director's hearing was held on February 27th. At that time, the director did add some additional conditions. However, the project was appealed to council on March 31st of this year. We, and how we start these projects is that they are on the consent calendar. And so that happened on May 18th, at which time three or more council members pulled it from the consent calendar. And it is now being heard tonight. Some of the key considerations. This is an individual review application. And so we do, as staff, make sure that the project conforms to the municipal code and the individual review guidelines. In this particular project, we have also added protections for the oak tree. And there is some discussion about basement dewatering. However, given all the previous discussions about basement dewatering, those are fairly standard conditions at this point. Next. So the oak tree does have a 60-foot tree protection zone. Given that size, it is covering a fair amount of the buildable area. And so we do take that into consideration when we're proposing the new home. This new home is built as far to the front setback as can be possible. Next. So the existing, this is the topo survey that you'll see. And this is actually the existing home that exists today. And you'll notice that the existing home is only a few feet from that oak tree. And so the new home is going to be a much greater distance. Given how close the existing home is, and the fact that it's going to be demolished. During the director's hearing, there were additional conditions added about having an arborist present, using sort of hand tools, you know, versus a big backhoe. And also that the 14 feet of the existing foundation that are closest to the tree, that foundation would remain, so that there is that much less disturbance to the roots of this tree. So this would all be during demolition. Next. So the construction of the new house, you'll see in orange here is the buildable area. But you'll see that the proposed new home is located towards the front setback. So the new home is about 40 feet away from the tree, you know, much greater than existing. And excavation would be no closer than 30 feet. It's anticipated with this proposal that potentially 17% of the critical root area could be potentially damaged. And but that is not considered removal under our code as removal would be one-fourth of that leaf or stem area. Next. One of the other key considerations, you know, beyond the individual review guidelines, is dewatering for basement. We know this is important to residents in Palo Alto. And Public Works has worked closely with the community to have enhanced standards around this. And so this project would implement all of those new standards. There would be reports given to Public Works during the billing permit review period that tell us where the groundwater is. We do have some preliminary reports that are showing the groundwater is at nine feet in one location. And in a second boring location, groundwater was not found. So we're anticipating around nine or 10 feet potentially hitting groundwater. But we will, again, during building review, get updated reports. And that does change with the seasons as well. Next. So with the shore, there's a bunch of shoring alternatives for building the basement. Lately, we have done more secant walls when we run into groundwater. Because the way the secant walls are constructed, they do hold back the groundwater much better, and we have to do a lot less dewatering. There's also the standard I-beam and wood lagging that's, has been normally done. And then you could do no, no shoring at all. But going this deep, there would need to be some sort of shoring. I think the no shoring is only about four feet deep. So as far as effects to the oak tree, staff would actually suggest the wood lagging construction in this case because the arborist report does say that we need to do the hand digging. And the way that secant walls are done, the way that they're sort of drilled into the soil, it's all mechanical. And so there is no way to look for roots the way there would be when you sort of go one by one with the boards in the wood lagging scenario. And again, that is normally figured out at the building permit stage. Next. So, like I said, the director did have a hearing in February when the director made that decision. He, he was ensuring that the project was in conformance with the municipal code, also that the project was in conformance with the IR guidelines. Additional tree protection measures were added to ensure the health of the oak tree. And the dewatering was reviewed and found that our new enhanced standard measures would be sufficient. Next. And so with that, staff would recommend that the council adopt the IR findings and approve the proposed project as conditioned by the director of planning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I should have laid out at the beginning a couple of our steps here that we need to take tonight. So first, I want to make sure we go through disclosures. Then the appellant will have 10 minutes, the applicant will have 10 minutes. Then we'll go to members of the public, and then we'll return for three minutes each to the appellate and applicant. And then lastly, back to council. So as for disclosures, I think let's just go alphabetically. Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. I responded to one of four phone calls from the appellate as a courtesy and declined the offer to visit a site that is not the site that is being considered this evening.
Thank you. Vice Mayor DeWise.
Yes, I got in touch with the appellants, Jack Morton and Keith Bennett. We did look at a site two doors down to see what secant walls look like. And then we looked at the tree in question from Mr. Morton's backyard. They also handed me printed materials, which were copies of information that they had emailed to council and actually several weeks ago. Those are in the public record. I also heard from Keith Bennett that Dave Muffley, who's a fairly renowned arborist on the canopy board, also handles Apple's corporate offices, said that the Valley Oak relies upon groundwater, not surface water, which may be a topic that comes up tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Phil Self.
Thank you. So a couple of months ago, I went and visited the site with Mr. Morton, the appellant. I have also spoken with the architect, Ms. Pavlovich, who is actually one of my neighbors and a very minor veterinary client of my wife, but much less than $1,000 a year. And also, on the advice of another council member, I went and looked at the excavation a couple of doors down, which is very large, but I'm not sure what I saw there, or what the relationship to this project is. Thank you.
Thank you. So I received a number of phone calls from the appellate, Jack Morton. And a few months ago, he noticed this project was coming up and encouraged it to be polled. And then late last week, I received another phone call from him, but declined to discuss the matter further. Councilmember Niss. You're on mute, Liz.
Yes, I have talked with former council member Jack Morton, but briefly. The tree is located about five or six blocks from me, so I have walked down and taken a look at it. I am familiar, I'm familiar with secant walls already. Beyond that, I didn't have contact with anyone else.
Thank you. Councilmember Koo.
When this was first on the consent calendar, I did drive by the property to verify which one it was. And as this was coming up to the, to the action calendar, I did speak with Mr. Morton and also met him at the site to, again, look at the tree, but also to look at the next door property or two doors down to see what a secant wall looks like when it's just going in.
Thank you. And Councilmember Tanaka.
So I talked to a former council member, Jack Morton, on the phone. I also had two office hours on this. Both of them are recorded and streamed live to Facebook and also to my YouTube channel as part of my office hours. So, you know, if you want to see what it was actually talked about, you can go there. And I biked by this property and also looked at a basement construction, I think, two houses down or something like that, from this as well.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yes.
So, so just Councilmember Tanaka. Appreciating that the recording is public, the parties here don't have an obligation to actually go and review that material. But, but we have an obligation to disclose if there was additional material or evidence that you received during that process that might influence your thinking. So if you could address that topic proactively here, that'd be great.
Sure. So both office hours were quite similar. So it was mainly the people who were concerned about the tree. Pretty much everything that was discussed is actually in the staff report. We also got a couple more emails that maybe went a little bit beyond the staff report that although the customers got it as well, it's also part of the public record. So I don't think anything was discussed at those office hours that wasn't already known.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. So now we'll move on to 10 minutes for the appellate, 10 minutes for the applicant, then to the public, and then back to the appellate and applicant. So if our appellants, I believe, are gonna be able to share their screen and make their case, is that correct?
I believe so. Mr. Morton, is there anybody else that's with you as part of your party for your presentation tonight?
Keith Bennett is supposed to be assisting him also.
Can we promote Keith from an attendee? I believe he may be in the attendees section. Or is he panelist already?
Yeah, I don't see him in the attendees.
Looks like he's a panelist now, Mr. Bennett.
Oh, I do see him now. So, Mr. Bennett.
You can, you can hear me, correct?
Oh, we can. Yes.
Okay, sorry. That, I mean, we have available experts because I'm not a tech, I'm not technically competent in a lot of the issues that are being raised. So we have an arborist available for questions. And then Keith is much more aware of the dewatering and other similar issues. So he will be available for questions, and I'm happy to share my screen with him. So tell me when you're ready for me to go.
The floor is yours.
Okay, so this is a complicated thing. Council's never, almost never been here in the 100-plus years that we've been a city. You know, in a real, when I get in a struggle with what, what am I to say? I put myself back into the historic perspective. So, you know, 100-plus years ago, a young man died, and his father, a robber baron, realized that maybe there's more to life than what was then called commerce. We came into existence a decade or so later, and we're named after the tall tree, what is now a thousand-year-old tall tree. About a mile and a half away was a oak that, at that time, was 250 years old or roughly there. And it, we don't know whether there was any competition between the redwood and the oak for, for being, being named the, the heart of Silicon Valley. But what council is going to be asked to do today is to decide that oak's favor and, and its future. So let me, let me, let me begin, and I'm happy to be interrupted if I can't elucidate clear enough what the issues are. You know, for the community, we seem to be at war on all perspectives. Nationally, we're fighting a COVID-19. You know, and the world is fighting it. Locally, we, we seem to, nobody seems to have the values that we have in terms of protecting our urban forest. So we, we seem to be, and then when an issue like this comes up, there are all sorts of legal things we're supposed to be aware of. You know, we're supposed to bring up, has, has the city conformed with CECA? Do, do they have, have they taken the appropriate negative declarations where necessary? Those are incredible standards for, for a community presentation. But since this is a quasi-legal hearing, we're expected to provide the same level of expertise that the city staff is paid to do. So first of all, I'm told that we need to indicate that, as applicants, we're here to emphasize that the 300-year-old oak at 2353 is a protected tree and meets the conditions of a heritage tree under Section 81009B in that it is unique, it is of importance to the community, it is an outstanding specimen of its species, and it's one of the largest or oldest trees in Palo Alto. So we have submitted a letter from the arborist that cared for the tree for many, many years. And that arborist almost begs the council not to do, not to approve as part of a building permit, what is the biggest threat to the tree, namely the basement. Okay, so let's go for this. This ancient oak has never had to compete for sustenance with a basement. When staff presents what's there, they sort of imply, well, there's already a house. What's the problem? Well, the problem is that house has no basement. The tree has never had the threat to its roots of a major, let's say, violation of the soil. So what we are asking, and then we've sent pictures to the city, to the city clerk to show what, for the record, what do you mean by one of these secants? We use language, but what you're talking about is an invasion. According to your own tree preservation regulations, removal is, which is a technical concept, means taking any foreseeable action that will lead to the death of a tree or will permanently endanger or damage its health, including but not limited to excessive pruning, cutting, trenching, excavating, altering the grade, or paying, paving within the drip line level. Taken, we believe, a taking strictly, that means you can't do anything. You can't. You can't remove that house. You can't do anything within that drip line. You, so you cannot change the, what's there. Basically, these people, these folks bought the house knowing it was a, an ancient oak, knowing that it was a protected species, even though they didn't appreciate it. And we, the rest of the community, are counting on you to uphold the values of our city as embodied in the spirit of the Tree Protection Ordinance and the dewatering regulations. Now, what we need to be sure of is that a building, approval of a building permit that is based on an arborist that has a conflict of interest because it represents the, the applicant does not constitute protecting a tree. And your job is solely to protect the tree. This is one of the oldest living trees in Palo Alto as identified under the city's tree regulations. It's not simply, you know, we've made, we've, we've, we have worked with staff and Emily has been particularly sensitive to the community with what's above ground. The issue reluctantly, we would accept some, a massive structure above ground where there is a, what we consider a historic one-story statement. But the issue isn't what's above ground. The issue is whether any basement should be allowed to invade the root space of a 300-year-old protected heritage tree. That is something that only the council could approve. And we do not believe that the protection plan deals with drilling 24-inch diameter, 23 or 30-foot deep dewatering. Beth, I don't know if you have some of those pictures. Staff tried to send them earlier today. But if you have one of those C-Cant wall pictures, the biggest threat to this oak is the construction of a sub-ground massive, massive basement. Our position is that you should not, you should not approve it with a basement at all, even though we will reluctantly consent to the above ground. We believe staff has wrongly referred to sections of the code that do not apply to single-family homes. So for example, they're feeling that the 25% test, what is, basements are not counted in Palo Alto's floor area calculation. It's a travesty of community values. So that you end up with these massive houses with massive basements, none of which threaten the, the local protected trees like this basement does.
Jack?
Yes?
You want, we're running out of time here. If you want me to show my presentation on dewatering?
Please, go ahead. This, I'll, I'll just end by saying this is a test of what we as a community value. Go ahead, Keith. Okay, let's see. What do I need to do to share my screen?
I'll stop the time. Mr. Bennett, you should see in the center of your screen a share screen button. That's green. There you go.
We got it?
You got it.
And then if we want to go into presentation mode, it'll be a little bit larger.
Yeah, let me try to get that.
You have a minute and 14 seconds roughly left on the clock and I'll begin when you, but you will have some time in rebuttal, I believe.
Yeah, let's see. Is it full screen or not? What do I need to do here?
I believe Emily is sharing for you, Keith.
It looks chopped.
So, Mr. Bennett, this is Ms. Foley's sharing her screen to share your presentation.
Oh, that's an old present. That's, that's from last week. I have a different one today, which I sent to Beth Minor and I have on my computer.
Okay. So Ms. Tom is going to?
Yes, it's this one here. It's that one.
Okay, so you'll advance the slides when you let her know the slides will advance. Again, you have a minute and 14 seconds remaining.
Okay, I will be then very quick. Advance. That's a photo of the tree. I'm very knowledgeable about dewatering. There are two ways to deal with dewatering in Palo Alto. Cut-off walls, also C-Cant walls, and broad-area dewatering. Next slide. The key point here is that Valley oak trees per Wikipedia require this year-round access to groundwater. This is from Wikipedia. Next slide. This is from a arborist, Walter Levinson. And he provided his opinion on the issues for this tree. The main points here are that the root systems go much deeper than are commonly considered by arborists. They go down 20 to 30 feet. The groundwater at this site ranges between seven and 11 feet normally. Next slide. And this tree is likely to require access, is used to getting access of that groundwater. This is the problem of putting in C-Cant walls, which has been discussed. I don't think it's practical. It worked very well. Next slide. This shows evidence from 2151 Byron that the groundwater using the method that staff recommended would be lowered by approximately eight feet and it would be lowered for the duration of the construction. We think that is. Okay, I'll stop. If you'd just like to finish up your thoughts, sir, and then we'll go to the applicant.
So if staff wants, if?
Go to the last slide. So we had an opinion in there that, from the arborist letter, that dewatering is a significant risk to the screen. We believe that the conditions of approval are to limit the basement floor surface to a maximum of eight feet below ground surface. This will, like done properly, mean that you do not need to dewater. That will greatly reduce the risk to the tree. And it also have conditions that no groundwater shall be discharged to either the storm drains or sanitary sewer. But if you get some incidental groundwater, you can recharge it on site, which is done this. All right. Thank you both very much. Can we next go to the applicant who also has 10 minutes?
So the applicant is Ms. Gordana Pavlovic?
First, it's Yali Zhou.
We need to get the, yeah, the mute.
Yes, okay, go ahead.
Okay, I can, I can see it here. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Yali Zhou. And I'm the owner of the property. I was happy to be here and give my children opportunity to grow in a friendly neighborhood and be safe biking to school. We got a gift from nature with this magnificent oak tree in my garden. And we have done everything to nature it and preserve it. Before starting the design of our house, we engaged the two arborists. Jason from McQuinnahan, arboriculturist, to evaluate and maintain the tree, and Davy Group to prepare the arborist report per city requirements. We waited for them to tell us where it would be safe to design a new house. Only then would begin designing our dream home. We had to change the desire several times to accommodate neighbors' wishes. It was okay, as I wanted to develop good relationship with them. When we received the approval from the planning department in December 2019, I was so hopeful that my home would be ready for my family by 2021 school year. Instead, we keep being pushed back with my neighbor keeps finding yet another thing to complain. I do not understand why my neighbor is showing so much animosity towards my house. Instead, appreciating all my work to do what is best for the tree, I have been advised, advised by the best professionals and got a city approval twice. For the first time in all the years I have lived in California, I do not feel welcome the better community that I chose for my family. I can tell you that is not a good feeling. Thank you so much for your time.
Is that all the time the applicant would like to use? I believe you still have some time remaining, but it's your choice.
This is Gordana Pavlovic. I am the designer of this house. I don't see how we can.
We, we can hear you, but we can't see you, but.
Voila, voila, samash.
There we go.
Yes. Good evening. I am Gordana Pavlovic. Can you hear me, hear me and see me?
We can hear you. Please proceed and welcome.
Something is not right. I would like to say a few words. From the very first moment, my client and I were smitten by the beauty of the magnificent oak tree on the property that she acquired and we were determined to protect it. That is why we first created an advisory team, starting with two arborists, then surveyor, followed by soil and civil engineers to help us do what is best. Only then we started designing the house. Planning office provided us with the steady guidance throughout. Successful collaboration between our team and the city resulted in the approval of the project last year. Now I would like to share some data from the project. There is a drawing. If you can see the site plan, Emily has, yes. Can you enlarge it, please? Wonderful. Thank you. On this site plan, I'm showing both the existing and the proposed house. The existing house is shaded in pink. And you can clearly see how close the existing house comes to the tree. It's less than four feet. At some areas where the trunk actually reaches the ground, it is less than two. We were advised to give it 30 feet space. We were happy to go to 30 feet, four inch, 34 feet and four inches with the garage, which is closest to the tree trunk. And we have 40 feet and four inches with the rest of the house from the tree trunk. The first floor of the existing house, together with the garage, takes about 1,813 square feet. The proposed first floor of the house, together with the garage, is 1,600, it's, I'm sorry, it's 1,500, it's 1,625 square feet. In the next stage of our project, our team will be joined by very innovative and experienced structural engineer Lars Lee from Strandberg Engineering. I worked with Lars for years on many projects and he is very, very serious. His task will be to find the best and the least invasive structural solution for this project, as well as want to minimize dewatering and even try to avoid it. Our soil expert, engineer Lucas Ottoboni from Roaming Engineers, will do another set of readings to verify the water level and advise the best time for the construction. As always, we are determined to follow city guidelines and regulations and keep everyone informed. Thank you very much for your time. Now I would like to introduce some members of our advisory team. Elizabeth?
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Lannam. I work for Davy Resource Group. And I want to start by talking a little bit about tree root science. So I've learned the majority of my tree root science from Jim Urban, who is a trees and soils expert. And most of his research has come out within the last 10 years. So under ideal conditions, which is the appropriate amount of water, oxygen, void space, tree roots can be found at depths of about 20 feet. But this neighborhood was developed in, I believe it was the early 40s, indicating this Valley oak has spent about a third of its life in urban conditions of compaction hard scape, which eliminates both the void space and the oxygen needed to maintain any deep roots that it might have had. The idea that this is accessing groundwater in a way where it can actually be utilizing it is very low. These roots have probably desiccated and died over time and surface roots have developed to replace them. In addition to that, I don't really need to get into it too much, but the idea of mature oaks maintaining a taproot is actually a fallacy. That is something that happens with juvenile oaks. And as they mature, they'll be either desiccated about three feet or it'll hit it like a hard pan or a rock and turn and become a structural root. In most situations, trees are unlikely to have significant roots under about the top four or five feet of soil. And the majority of their roots are actually within the top two feet of soil. This is why tree protection zones are so large, because the trees need a wide base to keep them stable. The idea of this deep root structure comes from early studies in the 30s where trees were studied growing in very fertile dust-like soil where they could just keep growing down and down. So to go to this project, as we've discussed before, the existing home is four and a half feet from this Valley oak tree. And it's already showing some signs of damage due to the tree's roots. If it's not updated, this owner could request and realistically be approved for the removal of this tree since the TPZ takes up a little more than 50% of the buildable lot space. And the Palo Alto City policy states that this tree could be considered for removal at 25%. This new home is further from the tree with the closest wall at 35%, or 35 feet from the Valley oak tree. This is calculated, as was already stated, as a 17% impact to the TPZ of this tree. And the ANSI 300 standard, in addition to Palo Alto standard, specify that it's acceptable to prune 25% live tissue from a healthy-conditioned tree. And this oak tree is considered healthy condition. While there is an expectation that there will be roots found underneath this home, some root regeneration may have been suppressed over the years based on the compaction, based on the foundation. But regardless, based on what the science tells us, the roots are most likely to be damaged based by the foundation cut, not any basement activity. So the tree protection plan that was developed specifies the existing home has to be hand demoed. A certified arborist has to be onsite for all demo, all excavation and any new cuts. All of this has to be handwork. The reports specify methods for avoiding any new soil compaction on the site. For, you know, there, there's the part where we're leaving parts of existing foundation if it's going to preserve any roots. The, there's a procedure for root pruning where it's going to be necessary.
Ms. Lannam, your time has elapsed.
If, if you'd like to finish your final thought, please.
There's also descriptions for soil amendments, which we've been working with McQuinnahan, and very careful tree protection fencing measures. So basically, just to sum up, this has been reviewed by four arborists on our team, two certified arborists, I assume, on city staff, and arborists from SP McQuinnahan, all who agree that this tree is more likely to have a better future than were we to let things remain as they are.
Thank you very much and thank you to the appellate and applicant teams for your presentations. Let's now go to members of the public who managed to speak on this item. And if the clerk would please help those folks provide their comments and input.
Any member of the public that wishes to speak on this Webster Street item, please raise your hand or dial star nine on your phone. Our first, somebody hung up. Our first speaker is Karen Holman. Karen, go ahead.
Beth, I'd ask to speak after Winter Dellenbach.
Right, I don't, I don't know that I can bring her in. I don't see her, oh, here, back here. Let me see if she.
I'm here.
Okay, Winter, go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, yeah, I'm.
Hi, um, yeah, I'm defending this valley oak because, uh, for long-term survival. Uh, one of my attachments, oak trees, as I named my son Oak, who lives in this town. Um, so I have a natural attachment. I trust, I'm hoping you all read my email about this that I sent out a couple days ago, and I'll summarize some of that. The, um, uh, one of the key code sections, eight point ten point zero five zero, section B states uh, that, uh, it applies to developments on single-family lots such as this lot. And, uh, I pointed out that, uh, B one of that code section applies to this tree because neither its trunk nor its flared trunk base is touching or within the building footprint, thus it cannot be removed. Um, yeah, as this section states, it's not in the, uh, it's not going to be in the other, uh, building footprint either, of course. And section D does not apply because section B one does apply. Even if section D were to apply, uh, used to try to justify removal of this tree, uh, the Webster development doesn't meet its, uh, twenty-five percent reduction of permissible building area that I believe Karen Holman's going to speak to. Um, you know, I had a, uh, there's a, uh, five million dollar house built next to me, and we have a similar tree to this, although not so big and not so old, but the same kind of valley oak. And, uh, that tree, that bill, uh, house was completed last year, and I'm going to have to now call a, uh, certified arborist in because the tree, I tried everything I could to protect this tree. I had the tree protection folks out all the time. Walter Passmore can certainly speak to that. And, and our valley oak tree that sits right on the property line between us and the, and the new house next door uh, is looking very bad. And, um, I, I, I am so, um, uh, distressed about tree protection in this town. And you have a pathway to protect this tree and you should do it. And I wish you would just turn down the application until the applicant comes back without a basement. Uh, otherwise, I believe that this is a slow death that is going to overtake this oak tree that could live for hundreds of more years. Thank you.
Thank you, Winter. Our next speaker is Karen Holman. Karen, go ahead. Karen, you may need to unmute yourself.
I did and somehow got muted again. Um. I lost my point here. Shoot. Okay. Okay, uh, when interpretation of code is determined necessary, the intention of the code is a critical and essential consideration. In making interpretations, it is important to keep in mind the city's relevant policies, code, and other relevant guidance. For instance, in this code, Palo Alto holds its canopy as a point of pride. This is a Tree City USA. Our canopy is, is identified as part of our, of Palo Alto's infrastructure. We are the home to the nonprofit canopy, which the city helps support. We have a tree technical manual and a city arborist on staff. We plant trees to celebrate various events and persons. The staff needs your guidance council on applying sections B, D, excuse me, on sections eight, B, and D. This is the council's opportunity to provide that guidance. As Winter said, I also believe that B two is the section that applies to the single-family zone property, just as the code itself states. I do not think D applies because B does, but also because in the context of the other references mentioned here uh, in my comments, it is difficult to conceive that code would have been written that would allow protected trees to be removed in this and surely other situations when the maximum development potential is achievable. For this project, please allow only an eight-foot basement and no de-watering. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Our next speaker is Walter Levison, to be followed by Sandra Bowman. Walter, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. This is Walter Levison, consulting arborist. I was retained today, just a few hours ago, by the appellant, uh, Mr. Jack Morton. To take a look at the situation, I went through the, um, fifty-five-page city manager's report and included, which includes the uh, D V Resource Group arborist report. And, uh, much of what was said tonight in terms of arboriculture information was actually correct. The part that often gets left out, which many people do not realize, is that in Palo Alto, the soils in my experience in twenty-two years of consulting as a private consultant in the peninsula, the, the soils of Palo Alto tend to be a lot deeper and, um, more easily rooted than other soils, and we tend to see in the cobbly or perineal type soils, um, tree, oak tree in particular, root growth that tends to go far deeper than it would normally or commonly be realized. And the result of that is that trees, um, then become somewhat quote-unquote dependent on those deeper water sources, and they do have these sinker roots which vertically tap in a downward position from locations along the horizontal roots. Um, so even though most roots may be shallow, there are a lot of these vertically tapping roots which extend downward as sinker roots along the lengths of.
I'm sorry, Mr. Levinson, if you are a party to this, uh, under, um, contract with one of the parties, you are not allowed to give public comment. You need to make your comments part of the, um, appellant's time.
Oh, I see. My name came up there, so I just basically, okay, very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Taylor. Sorry, we didn't catch that earlier.
Our next speaker, Sandra Broman, to be followed by Trish Goiti and Sophie Chung. Sandra, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Yes. Good evening, dear council members. I am Sandra Broman, and my house is located next to this construction. I want to make sure that you understand that the valley oak tree was legally protected before this new owner bought the house. Once you see this magnificent tree, you will understand why the neighbors on Webster Street are working so hard to save it. The basement needs to be eliminated. Any excavation will damage the roots of the tree and likely will require de-watering. No basement, no basement equals no de-watering and the survival of the tree. We all know on Webster Street what extensive de-watering means. It means damages to our houses and trees. Enough is enough. After all, it's the responsibility of the council to protect our canopy for future generations. A wrong decision can definitely kill the tree, or even worse, the tree could fall on my house. At this point, I am very worried about what would happen to the tree of my property. You council members have the authority to set conditions of approval for the new construction to definitely protect the tree by requiring a bond just in case the tree dies prematurely from neglect or experiments with its roots. This three hundred-plus-year-old valley oak tree is irreplaceable. I love the tree. Please save it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Our next speaker is Trish Goiti, to be followed by Sophie Chung and Rebecca Eisenberg.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for hearing my comments tonight. My name is Trish Bingham-Goiti. I have a deep-rooted connection to the property. I grew up in the home. Um, I think we're all in agreement that this is a magnificent tree. Um, and I really appreciate that the council members have visited to see the true splendor of it. I also appreciate that the applicant has acknowledged what a wonderful tree it is and that she has made, uh, plans to move her, her, um, new property, her new home, farther away from the, uh, from the tree. However, I feel that her, her actions need to, um, live up to her words. Actions speak louder than words. If she values the tree, if the city of Palo Alto, the council, values its trees, which I know you do, we cannot risk the life of this amazing three hundred-plus-year-old tree. Um, the stakes are just too high. I feel that the seventeen percent amount damage to the roots is not acceptable. We don't know what could happen. Um, there is no way to see under the ground to really know when, uh, the, the effects that this will have, this new huge basement will have on the tree. Please, please, if there's any chance that this large basement could harm the tree, then make the basement smaller. Uh, take your tree protection ordinance to heart. If the basement construction were to cause the tree to sicken and die, you would surely regret not amending the plan. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of our appeal to protect this beautiful, irreplaceable oak that is an immeasurable asset to the whole community and, and an irreplaceable asset for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Trish. Our next speaker, Sophie Chung, to be followed by Rebecca Eisenberg, and then Ruth Benz. Sophie, you may have to unmute on your end.
Here, can you hear me?
Yep, now we can. Go ahead. You have two minutes.
Okay, yes. Uh, so I'd like to see if Anne Gess can speak before me, because today I'm here to actually translate her remarks into Chinese. Is that possible?
Um, what is her name?
Uh, Anne Gess. She's, um, number eleven.
Right.
Just, just a point of procedure, are we going to have both these speakers go at the same time? And one will speak in English and the next in Chinese?
Uh.
I would recommend, if we can, to, um, give the speaker the four minutes and so that the translator can translate in between, but if there's a common practice here, that would also be fine.
Does, does the court have a recommendation here, actually?
I have them both unmuted. Um, and we have done this in the past when we've been in council chambers. So, um, we might as well do it here.
Okay, thank you. Let's, let's go ahead.
Both Sophie and Anne are unmuted at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you. This is Anne Bingham-Gess. Thank you so much, uh, Mayor Fine and council members for having, uh, hosting this special judicial meeting. Um, as my sister mentioned, we grew up on the property. Uh, so we have a special connection to the house and the tree, obviously. Um, we are happy that the applicant is, um, is interested in preserving this beautiful tree. Um, I read the staff report. I just felt like it raised a lot of red flags for me. Um, uh, ditto the comments by the arborist. Oh, incidentally, what I'd love to do, if possible, is Sophie, um, has graciously consented to translate just one portion of my comments that I would like to, um, you know, personally say to Ms. Jo, if, if she's still here. So this part doesn't need to be translated, but I do have a, um, just some, uh, just some comments at the end that, that she will help me with. So thank you so much. Um. Uh, so as, uh, Arbus Lannam was, uh, talking about the root structure of this particular tree, um, she mentioned that she that the roots have been there for a third of the life of the tree. I would beg to differ. I think, you know, when we talked to the McQuinnahan arborists years ago, who are the family that worked on the tree for years, they thought the tree was probably four hundred years old, the house is only eighty years old. So this tree has, uh, only had a fifth of its life with, with the existing house there. Um, also, the staff report raised the, the point that the existing house foundation sits within the drip line. And yes, that is true. I actually played in those four feet from the house to the tree, so I know how close the house is. Um, but, uh, there is no, there is nothing like a basement or anything at that part of the, uh, tree. I know because I used to crawl through there, and even the crawl space does not extend a, all the way to the back. So, um, I'm also concerned about, uh, new, the lack of hydrogeological studies. Um, they mentioned two borings that have been taken, that the rest would be done at the time of the building permitting stage, which seems way, way too late in the process to pull the plug, literally, if, if, uh, substantial de-watering. I will defer, of course, to Keith Bennett, um, who is the expert on de-watering, but I will add a pub, uh, personal anecdote. Uh, I remember when the property on Byron was de-watered, uh, probably ten years ago. This is just behind the house, and the de-watering process went on for at least six months, just, just draining the water out to the storm drains. And, um, I'm sure that had an effect at the time on the tree and possibly weakened it back then. So any further de-watering at this point would be a disaster. As my sister mentioned, seventeen percent probability that it, the tree could be damaged. I just don't see that that is an acceptable risk. What is the benefit to the community? Having one family enjoying a large basement, um, the, uh, doesn't seem to be in the best interests of the community. And now I'd like to address, uh, Ms. Jo. My family really appreciates that you want a nice house for your family, Ms. Jo, and we want to welcome you to Palo Alto. We're glad you've chosen Palo Alto. But, Ms. Jo, we would love to urge you not to build a basement on the property because experts have determined this basement will probably damage the roots of the tree, no matter how carefully it's dug. This tree is one of the oldest and most beautiful in Palo Alto. My father, who is eighty-seven years old, now loved the house and this tree. My mother, who passed away two years ago, loved this tree. I would respectfully ask that you consider the wishes of these beautiful elders who sold you their beloved house and garden. Thank you. And now Sophie, if you could, uh, speak for me.
Uh, yes, alright. So Zhou Taitan,您好. Uh, 我的家人呢很开心也很能理解 那我们更高兴您选择了Palo Alto这个宜人宜居的城市 因为呢，有关专家已经确认 那这棵树呢，是我们Palo Alto市里最古老也是最美丽的老树之一 我的母亲两年前已经去世了我的父亲今年也已经八十七岁了他们都热爱这间房子和这棵树 Yes, so I'm done with translating.
Thank you, Sophie and Anne.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rebecca Eisenberg, to be followed by Ruth Benz and Eric G. Rebecca, go ahead.
Hi, thanks so much for letting me speak about this tree. So, twenty-three fifty-three Webster Street. As it turns out, uh, my husband and I looked at this house when it was on the market about five years ago. We rent a house, uh, about exactly two blocks away. Um, in fact, we went back to look at this house several times. It was a beautiful house, but the price was, and the price was extremely low for this neighborhood. It was two-point-four million dollars. Um, we came back again and again. We really thought about it, really considered it, still couldn't really afford it. So we didn't buy it, but here's the main reason. All over, all the handouts that were shown at the house and said to us by the real estate agent were in all capital bold letters. Seller advises buyer to do own research regarding tree removal. Seller and agent do not warrant that tree can be modified at all. Tree is ancient and protected oak tree. Seller tells buyer not to expect to modify tree in any way. It was said over and over and over again. So being lawyers, we actually asked for the disclosures, and we saw the disclosures and we looked at them. And I gotta say, it couldn't have been more clear that this oak was ancient, ancient, it's protected, and that it can't be modified in literally any way whatsoever. And so again, if, even if we could afford it, we wouldn't have bought it because this was going to be a bad investment in a house that could probably not be built up or out or down in any way because of this beautiful ancient oak tree. And I bring this up now, it's And I bring this up now as someone who was there, because I, to hear the buyer say that this was some sort of innocent mistake, or that there's no way she could have known that she cramped, modified the tree, I think it's just disindignuous. I I couldn't have, I couldn't imagine having been, having been told in more ways, in all caps, and just so obviously that this tree can't be removed. I don't think it's the job of the Palo Alto City Council to help solve a private party's investment mistake. Please save the tree. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Our next speaker is Ruth Benz, to be followed by Eric G. and Dan Sekoi. Ruth, you may need to unmute on your end. Welcome back. There we go, Ruth, you've got two minutes.
I have it now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Ruth Benz, and I live directly across the street from the proposed two-story construction at twenty-three fifty-three. For forty-four years, my family and I have enjoyed the full view of the canopy and upper trunk of the majestic three hundred plus years old oak tree. Visitors to my home marvel at this giant environmental gem, which houses wildlife, oxygenates the air, and provides shade and respite. When this new construction process first began with the planning commission, the twenty-three-hundred block of Webster Street homeowners all agreed that the tree should be preserved and certain changes needed to be made to the blueprint of the new house. A petition was submitted to the plant planning commission, some changes were made, and the neighbors assumed that the tree was indeed safe. Now it seems clear that the de-watering methods used to excavate the proposed oversized basement will endanger the tree. It is incumbent upon the city council to act upon this issue, referring to the Palo Alto Municipal Code, Section eight, ten, zero, five, zero, B, which would allow the council to save this legally protected oak tree. The proposed basement already will be larger than the footprint of the first floor and is deeper than necessary. The city council has the opportunity to choose between giving in to the self-centered ideas of a homeowner who will create a living space to inhabit for a few decades versus saving a centuries-old natural creation, which has enhanced the environment of countless people over the years. Does having an oversized basement in breadth and depth take precedence over the beauty and benefits of the oak tree? Thank you for acting upon this by exercising your right to preserve this protected tree and see the bigger Palo Alto picture as a leader in the green movement, not just give in to the desires of one new homeowner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Our next speaker is Eric G., to be followed by Dan Sekoi and Vincent D. Martel. Ruth, go ahead, or correction, Eric, go ahead. There you go, Eric, you have two minutes.
Hi, uh, my name is Deb Goldin, Eric is my husband, and it's his computer. I hope this isn't a problem. Uh, as far as all the tree scientists and their ideas of how how it's gonna grow and how this basement's not gonna affect the tree and so on and so forth, there is a tree at twenty-three fifty Tasso Street, which is one block away, which, what the house was torn down ten years ago, and a three-level house with a full basement, pretty similar to what's being planned for twenty-three fifty-three Webster was built, and that beautiful heritage oak, which was a a sister tree to the tree at twenty-three fifty-three Webster, it was just as big, just as gorgeous, is now in decline. So I don't care what the tree scientists say or the arborists say, if you wanna go see for yourself, yes, the constructions damage the trees. And these trees, they're not, the valley oaks, these heritage valley oaks are not just trees, it's like saying half dome is another mountain in the sciaras. The valley oaks are really on a completely different level, and my timer has stopped, so I have no idea how long I'm going. Um, construction, the construction can kill trees, the construction next door to me, there were two camper trees, street trees, that are now dead because of the construction. They were properly protected, everything was done to code, so yes, construction, even without a basement, kills trees. There was construction of a basement adjacent to mine, my house shook for eight weeks, windows shook, floors shook for eight weeks, and it almost killed me. So you can't tell me that building a basement isn't gonna damage this tree, I'm convinced that it is going to, and there is proof that it's going to. As for needing that extra sixteen hundred square feet of house, I raised my kids in nine hundred square feet, and we were fine, and this woman's already got three thousand square feet on top of this basement, so I don't see why it's being built, and it's gone to damage if not kill this tree. Um, and I think decisions should be based on values, not greed. That's all.
Thank you, Deb. Our next speaker is Dan Sekoi, to be followed by Vincent D. Martel, and then Susan Heller.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Dan Sekels. Um, wow, it's great to hear an outpouring of uh old, old names and uh faces from the neighborhood. Um, I'm the son of Jim and Sally Sekels, longtime um uh canopy members and advocates of Palo Alto's urban forest. Um, I grew up on Webster Street, about the middle of the block, and the the oak tree in question is just a landmark, it's a a vital landmark uh to to my childhood. Um, I I mean, everybody, everybody has pointed this out. Uh, we and Palo Alto cannot afford in any way to let such a treasure be jeopardized. The whole spirit of Palo Alto is fostering and protecting its urban canopy. This is an extreme example, and the idea of building this, building this basement uh next to such an important uh, an important treasure is like putting a square peg in a round hole, this just doesn't fit. And we cannot, uh, or 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 council cannot gamble on this. It's a fascinating project, and and uh, Jo, or if I'm mispronouncing her name, has her her list of experts, and yes, if you want to make the case, you can justify, you you can make a case for it, but in all practical sense, this does not belong, it does not make sense, and frankly, it's unfair to the rest of the community to make a, to take this chance on the benefit of one family i- in such an unnecessary way. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dan. Our next speaker is Vincent D. Martel, followed by Susan Heller, and then Mary Ellen White. Vincent, go ahead, you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. I'm a resident on Webster Street, um, by by the same block where uh the new construction is being proposed. I just wanna make three points. Uh, the first one is this conversation is really interesting, because it shows, it shows that there was an obvious problem from the start, in that the new owners of the house were really trying to apply the rules to the letter of the rules, not the spirit of the rule, and I think by doing so, they're putting the Palo Alto staff in a very difficult position, um, when it's obvious that there was a problem from the start. So my second point is, this is why we have public hearings. Um, the reason is to check if residents object to the proposed construction, and the truth is, as you're seeing, residents in this community care a lot about the water, um, and about the trees, um, and in fact, I think it's thanks to the work of several of those who were in the meetings today, that aggressive de-watering in the neighborhood has stopped after it was demonstrated that it created lots of issues uh around buildings in the neighborhood. So with that, you know, the 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 spirit of the law, the rule is not being respected. Um, residents have strong objections against this, and my third point is, based on everything I've heard, it looks like simple changes to the house design would really help mitigate a lot of these concerns, so I hope the right thing is done here. I think the city council cannot approve this project as presented, um, and you know, we hope to welcome the new family, we just ask that they would accommodate their plans a bit to make sure that they respect the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Vincent. Our next speaker is Susan Heller, to be followed by Mary Ellen White, and then Pradeepja. Susan, you have two minutes.
Can you hear me? Um, my name's Susan Heller, I'm here with my son Henry. Uh, we live a short walk from the subject property. The city of Palo Alto website says that trees directly improve the quality of life for Palo Alto. It goes on to outline how Palo Alto supposedly protects those trees. I wanna tell you about our recent experience. We have a protected coast live oak that's twice as high as our house, with a forty-two-foot diameter canopy, and it takes up our entire front yard. The tree is thirty-five feet from the neighbors, from where the neighbor's former house was, and it's twenty feet from the property line. The neighbor tore down that house in May. This project has a tree protection plan, the city has a very comprehensive tree techni- technical manual. Both were ignored during the deconstruction of this house. The owner's arborist abrogated their responsibility to enforce the plan that they had submitted to get the demolition permit. I could point to four violations off the top of my head, including the fact that the proper tree protection fencing was not in place. Spoke to the owner and of the project, I spoke to the contractor, both assured me that the tree would would not be impacted, that was not the case. I woke up one day to see a terrifying piece of machinery ripping up the ground and everything on it. I called and emailed Urban Forest, but it took them three days to come out and inspect the project due to staff cuts. When they finally were able to come out, they found that some of the roots of my tree had been severed. All this drama happened even before the building of this new house began. Across the street from me, they are also building a new pool and house. There's a huge old protected oak tree in the rear of this property, but the new pool works have built, been built right under the tree. Again, the fencing and protection is not per the tree technical manual. I'm sure that this tree will suffer damage. Therefore, I strongly disagree with the statement in the staff report that says, "Tree protection is achievable through the implementation of standard project conditions of approval, adopted city regulations, and project-specific conditions of approval." I'm here to say that based on my recent experience, tree protection plans and city planning requirements are all meaningless when the builders and owners don't care, and there aren't enough city resources to monitor the situation. Damage to oak trees does not appear right away, it can take five to ten years to be visible, by that time, the builder and developer.
Susan, can you please sum up?
Okay, I'm all done.
Your two minutes are up, if you can sum up with your last thought.
Uh, I, it's, it's a, does the owner have a right to destroy a significant neighborhood resource so they can have a yoga room? It's a question of priorities, please do the right thing and save the tree, please deny the approval, and send the plans back to the owner for revision. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Ellen White, to be followed by Pradeepja, and then Rob Lovitsky. Mary Ellen, you may need to unmute from your end. There you go, Mary Ellen.
Okay, thank you. I live at two-three-four-three Webster Street, next door to two-three-five-three, and I should mention that this property, this long bit block of property on here, was once a truck farm. When we moved into our house, there was a, the, we found that the well for that truck farm was on our property. Not really a s- a safety, it was a safety issue for us to cover over that uh well, so that, which was at that time just covered over with some boards, because the water was something like six feet down, I mean, you could just look down, you could reach into it, you know, on rainy days, you could reach into the water. So there was at one time a very high uh water level in this area. And I mean, I have lived a large part of my life, if not most of it, with this ancient oak as part of my environment. Having that beautiful old oak threatened with destruction and that of many others. I feel, as people must feel, when their neighborhood is at risk in a forest fire or their hillside home and surrounding area slides downhill in an earthquake. Fires and earthquakes are a natural disaster, but like most disasters, there is always a human element. The untended camp, uh, untended campfire, the toss-to-grat, the poorly-built house, and laws and regulations are enacted to try to minimize that human destructive addition to the natural threat. Palo Alto has a tree protection ordinance, and I believe it is important that that ordinance be upheld for the benefit of all. The benefit of one person, a person who knew Phil well when purchasing the property that had held an ancient oak, and that that oak had to be saved. If this oak goes dying a slow death by basement, then surely over time, all trees in Palo Alto will be in danger. If you don't support the pre- tree protection ordinance now, no trees in the future will be safe. The tree is three hundred years old, it cannot be replaced. This is not a case of last year I planted string beans.
Mary Ellen, go ahead and sum up, your two minutes are up.
Okay, the oak tree is not an annual, nor does it benefit only one person. It is the beloved environment of many of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Beth. Um, Mary Ellen is a party to the appellant, and so again, if you are a party to the appellant in this case, if you um are hired by the appellant, if you have an association with the appellant, um, you cannot speak during public comment. You need to coordinate as part of the appellant team to give your comments during the ten-minute presentation time or during the rebuttal time. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Our next speaker is Pradeepja, to be followed by Rob Lovitsky and Curtis Smaller. Pradeepja, go ahead, you have two minutes.
Hi, this is Peter Hu, I'm with my spouse Pradeepja. Um, I just wanted to say that we're both the children of immigrants. I personally have had the fortune to grow up in Palo Alto, and also to come back and live um here as an adult.
Pradeepja, somehow you got muted. If you can unmute on your end, there you go.
Okay, so um, cutting down that tree on our property actually put us into a depression for, I think, nearly a year. Um, I think one thing you have to realize as immigrants coming into the country is that often your children will have different values from you. Um, you know, we learn to appreciate different things, and uh, something like cutting down a tree that's hundreds of years old is something that you can never, ever take back. You can always build a basement, your children can build a basement, but they can't, they can't possibly grow a tree of that age, so uh, that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Pradeepja. Our next speaker is Rob Lovitsky, to be followed by Curtis Smaller. Rob, go ahead.
Hi, I'd like to speak.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to speak for this oak and for other trees. There was a similar case about two years ago in Mountain View, where there was a small house in the front of a deep lot, and there were seven redwoods in the back of that deep lot, and the developer bought the house and the lot, and then proposed to build a giant house and wipe out the seven redwoods in the back. Well, hearings were held in Mountain View, and they had to be held in a very large place because so many people came out to speak, and it was Parks and Rec that made the final call on this, and Parks and Rec told that developer to leave the trees alone. We have another similar case that I've been dealing with, with Castelaya School Project, where the, we've got a bunch of protected oaks and redwoods. Staff has called them, quote, "less than significant" in the EIR, tried to just ignore them completely, and they're proposing to, the city's proposing to allow these oaks and redwoods to be moved, sliced and diced, you know, run pipes through the roots, uh, put a swimming pool next to one of the trees, uh, cut down a bunch. cut down a bunch of them. And I just want people to know that if you come out for this, you can come out to the meetings about the Castelaya proposal because we've got a set of six redwoods that are endangered and about half a dozen oaks. And it's not for a basement. Here, the issue is an underground parking garage, which doesn't really belong in an R1 neighborhood anyway. And we value our canopy, and I value this oak tree that you have, and I hope it stays. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Our next speaker is Curtis Smaller to be followed by our final speaker, Carrie Templeton. Curtis, go ahead.
The person who bought this property knew, she knew, she knew, she knew. She bought it anyway at an undervalued amount of money based on the idea that she would be able to change the zoning that she had. Why are we involved in systemic, the systemic idea of corporate socialism here? I don't understand why this board is consistently helping those who would destroy this canopy and would take our city from us. I am calling to all of you who are, who are listening to this and are listening to this oak that was disclosed over and over and over again that she could not take it down. Any idea that she couldn't is ridiculous. The bottom line is that she's already taken away a lot of it. This council has agreed to that. So I am calling for everyone who is listening and is thinking about this to understand that this council has already taken away your rights. They're just taking them more and more slowly. It's like the giving tree, but they're taking. It's the opposite, okay? So when you go back and there's nothing but a stump, remember that this council did that to you. And you should be voting against them in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. Our final speaker is Carrie Templeton.
Hi, thank you for the comments that have come so far. I wanted to share my thoughts mainly because the packet says this will be a final decision by council and that it won't be coming to the Planning and Transportation Commission. That being said, I'm speaking for myself and not on behalf of the PTC. One of the things we love about Palo Alto is its canopy. I echo the comments of Ms. Dellenbach and former Mayor Holman that we need to respect that and understand that that is a resource in our community, not just plant on someone's property. So I would encourage us to take good care of our canopy, take good care of our species diversity, and understand that resources that are centuries old are things that, in general, we protect in this, in this community. There's no way to replace it once it's gone. And the structure that is being proposed will, will never live as long as that tree already has. So I hope that you will consider that in your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. And that was our final speaker, Mayor Fine.
Okay, thank you to everyone for your comments and sharing your feedback with, with council and staff and the community. We'll now go to the appellant and applicant who will each have three minutes for a rebuttal or final statements. And then I'm going to suggest that council takes a ten-minute or so break. So if we want to go to the appellant and then the applicant again for three minutes each.
And if the appellants have visuals they are wanting staff to show, please let us know what those are so we can bring those up.
This is Keith Bennett. It's kind of hard to coordinate with Jack here remotely. But I would like the arborist, he did state right at the beginning that he was hired by us, and we just weren't familiar with the, with the procedure, to give his closing comment. I don't know how to do that. Will Levinson, I think he's still listening to the call.
Ms. Minor, can you make it so that Will Levinson can speak? Walter Levinson, sorry.
Yeah, Walter Levinson.
I'm looking for him now on the list.
I think he.
He was number three.
There he is.
While we're waiting for him, I'll make just a couple of comments.
Hi, Walter Levinson here.
Go ahead.
I was beginning to speak a little bit about, a few minutes ago, about the fact that in Palo Alto, the soils are quite gravelly and good in comparison to a lot of other soils that we see as consulting arborists in the urban areas. And the result of this is that these valley oaks tend to develop root systems that are actually deeper than are commonly thought. And they develop along the lengths of these lateral horizontal roots. They have these sinking roots that tap vertically downward, and they go down along various locations along these lateral roots. And the result of this is that the trees then become accustomed to tapping into a deeper water supply, which is the groundwater. And what happens is by de-watering a site, lowering the groundwater even temporarily reduces the tree's ability to access that water supply to which it has become accustomed. That becomes a problem because once the tree has become accustomed to the water supply and you take it away, even temporarily, you are threatening the tree by reducing that access. And in my professional experience, I've had situations where my construction project plans have reduced water to trees that became accustomed to them, including oaks that are not normally given a lot of water. But yeah, the results over the long term can be significant. And I just wanted to make people realize that a de-watering process is not benign and that it does have real effects that are known, especially in these cases where the trees are tapping into deeper waters, such as the oaks do in Palo Alto.
Excuse me.
One minute and one, ten seconds remaining.
This is Jack Morton. I'm sorry, neither the expert nor Keith were, are the appellant. So I apologize. We didn't, we, the staff has experts, and we thought we had the right to experts as well. So let me make my closing comments and do so understanding that Mary Ellen also didn't realize that she wasn't allowed separate time. So here's my, our final comment. Preserving and reducing risks to this magnificent arboreal giant in no way requires reducing the square footage or footprint area or location of the two-story structure for which staff is recommending council approval. Basement floor space is not counted in Palo Alto's floor area calculations. Therefore, any restriction on basement construction does not restrict the permissible residential building area of the lot. In a way, this project has become a test case for our community. Do we believe in upholding our tree protection ordinance enough to limit somewhat the endangering construction? Ask yourself, which is more important to our community and voters? A large media room with ten-foot ceilings or a three-hundred-year-old heritage oak? It is not council's role to compensate for an unwise real estate investment. Rather, it is the duty of council to exercise your full authority to uphold the letter and spirit of our tree protection ordinance and to conserve and protect one of the main features that make us the respected community we are and in which people want to live and own property. Thank you so much for your patience and considerations this evening.
Thank you. And next, let's please go to the applicant and her team if they have any closing remarks.
All right, this is Elizabeth Landon again. And I just want to say, in this compacted environment of low oxygen and void space that this tree's been in for eighty years at this point, groundwater is not the only resource, and it has not been its main resource likely for many years. The low oxygen, nitrogen fertilizer mixture with beneficial microbes and bio-nutrient that we've been treating it with to stimulate root growth is going to help develop additional, additional surface rooting. And I just want to say that this oak tree is a resource for the community, and the design is taking careful consideration to ensure that it will remain a resource and hopefully improve this resource for time to come. And with that, I want to turn it back to Gordana and the applicant.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I would like our engineer, Lucas Ottobani, to give the statement too. Lucas?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I did the soils investigation, and I just wanted to speak about three things, the soils, the groundwater, and the basement excavation. So yeah, at this site, I think you guys got a pretty good handle on it. Someone mentioned that we encountered groundwater at nine feet. That was a snapshot in May of 2018. And we intend on monitoring the groundwater level where that exactly is prior to construction and within a reasonable timeframe before construction. So I think there's, it's also important to note that we've done, we've done a lot of nearby projects, and groundwater level at nine feet is on the lower end of projects within three hundred to seven hundred feet from the site. So we've also encountered groundwater at like fourteen feet close by, which if that were the case near the construction start time, de-watering wouldn't, wouldn't even be in place. So I think, yeah, a lot of this kind of hinges on where the groundwater level is at the snapshot. And I think the applicant is willing to, to find the right timeframe to build. And so like late summer, early fall is usually when groundwater level is, is at its lowest point. And so I think that would be, you know, beneficial to the project if, if that was something that, that was needed. Yeah, and as for the soils, it's really stiff clay. And typically, roots aren't, you know, I mean, it's very, yeah, it's super stiff. It's not, it's not like a sandy soil where a carrot can bury itself in or whatever. This is, this is a whole, whole different subsurface. And so I guess I would, in a way, refute the, the fact that roots can, can climb real, real deep in this stuff. It's, yeah, it's, it's just very stiff. There's not a lot of void space at all. And then it's just, it's a temporary drawdown. And I guess I would just, I heard one of the council members say that possibly no excavation support or de-watering, that could be an option, but it's not being, you know, considered or whatever. I think that it is, there's a lot of lateral space on all four sides of the structure. And so I don't think there is a huge need for, you know, crazy equipment to be at the site doing the excavation or de-watering. And I also think if we're strategic about the time of construction, it may result in, in very little or possibly even no groundwater reduction or de-watering needed. So I guess just, just a couple of.
Thank you, Ms. Lovitz.
Thank you. May I get a few seconds for my client? Please, please, to be clear.
I apologize, but I think the, the time is up for.
But I'm sorry, you already had the wife of Jack Morton talk as a public speaker, and you gave her the.
I'm sorry, that was accidental and it was not intended by any means. If the applicant has one final thing she'd like to say, we'll allow that, but otherwise, we need to respect our rules.
Thank you very much. What she wanted to say is, she's very emotional, it's just two sentences. I'm afraid that what we have heard are personal attacks. I have four children and my parents to house in this house. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. That concludes our public comment, appellant and applicant comments and rebuttals as well. I'm going to suggest we take a ten-minute break and then return to council at nine forty. And just a quick time check, folks, we are scheduled to begin the utilities item at nine. So we're going to be about forty minutes behind before we get to this. See you all in ten. Or comments before I bring it back to everybody. A quick reminder, this is a quasi-judicial matter. So we are adjudicating a decision, not negotiating one or an outcome. We do need to honor our existing laws as they stand today and respect the due process of the applicants and the appellants. And finally, this is an individual review application. So that has its own ramifications. Anything the city attorney would like to add, just in framing this up before we go to council?
No, Mr. Mayor, that, that was appropriate comments. I agree with them. I'll be available as questions arise.
Okay, thank you. So I'll suggest we first have a round of comments and questions from council. And then after that, we can open it up to comments, questions, and motions. So just hit your hand as you'd like to be recognized. Council member Phil Seth.
Thank you. So just a couple of quick questions. It seems what's going through my mind at the moment is, will there be de-watering? And if there is any de-watering, will it hurt the tree? And sort of, we've had discussion on whether there'll be de-watering or not de-watering and how deep the roots are and so forth. Let me ask the question of staff. How deep is the basement in this, in this plan?
So the basement is nine feet on the interior, but it would have to be a couple of additional feet for the foundation.
So eleven feet outside.
Somewhere in that area, yes.
Okay. So I thought, I heard a statement that if the groundwater is ten feet down, seven to eleven, I think, or seven to fourteen, if the groundwater is ten feet down and we dig a basement that's eleven feet down, it'll reduce the water table another ten feet. That is, the water table will drop from ten feet to twenty feet. Did I hear that right? Is that accurate?
No.
Okay.
We have the applicant here. We also have Mike Navsiger with Public Works who may be able to address that question.
Yeah, good evening, council and Mayor Fine. Mike Navsiger, senior engineer with Public Works Engineering. Typical one-story basement would have an excavation of between twelve and thirteen feet for one story. And if the water that was located at, say, nine feet, nine-point-five feet, de-watering would need to bring the water down to about three feet below that exists, the proposed excavation. So down to about fifteen feet. So you're looking at a net approximately six to seven feet of lowering the water table. Once the basement is poured, the water can be, the pumping can be reduced, and the water can rise to about one foot below the slab. So not ten feet, as mentioned.
Okay, that's helpful. And then one of the other, one of the other speakers brought up an issue that I thought was kind of interesting, which is, you know, how do we, how do we ensure that the actual construction will in fact follow the plan, right? I mean, I think we heard a story where there was a plan and nobody followed the plan, right?
Our Public Works inspectors, particularly in de-watering projects, visit the site daily, if not several times per day. So we're very much aware of the activity that's going on. And in this particular case, it would be on everybody's list for regular inspection.
Okay. Okay, that's mine for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Council, Vice Mayor DeBois.
Yeah, I had a question about the critical root zone. I guess in some of the diagrams, it was a circle. Other ones, we said it was impacted by the foundation of the house. So do we believe the critical root zone goes under the house or just not under the house?
The, the tree protection zone as defined by the code is a standard circle. But then we look at these projects case by case to help determine where the actual roots are. And we also have the city's urban forester here, Walter Passmore, if you need some additional information.
Yeah, well, there's the TPZ and the CRZ. Yeah, I was asking about the, the critical root zone and really the impact of the foundation. I don't know if Walter's on.
The tree technical manual defines a tree protection zone radius. Critical root zone is an industry term that is used in some of the arborist reports. Critical root zone is an industry term that is used in some of the arborist reports. You know, we can convert back and forth, but really we use the term tree protection zone.
Okay, are they the same thing then?
Oftentimes, yes. There, there is some professional differences depending on location and type of tree.
Okay. I saw in the Davey report that, you know, it said the scope of the assignment was limited and didn't do any soil excavation. So what, what could we learn by doing some excavation?
We could discover location of surface roots. We have done so with excavation of traditional foundations. However, you'd have to use ground penetrating radar to discover location of deeper roots. And even that would only be accurate to, you know, maybe five to 10 feet. So we could discover more, but we, we typically don't require that type of advanced assessment for a residential construction project.
But just hand digging, you, you could find some of the roots that way, right?
Right, typically 90% of the roots are in the top 18 inches of soil.
Okay. And then I didn't see any discussion of dewatering in the arborist report. And I just wondered, do arborists usually include dewatering impacts?
Not usually, unless that's specifically requested.
Okay, thank you. And then a question for staff. So, you know, in terms of the basement, what is the proposed shoring method? And, you know, you know, we've had years of discussion about these different methods and whether they prevent dewatering or not. So would this method prevent dewatering?
So council member, the shoring method has not been chosen at this time. That is usually done at the building permit stage. And so we think that the lagging would be the most beneficial in this particular project. But we don't have all the information yet to make that conclusion.
Okay. And how would that be constructed? You know, would there be, I didn't see anything in the conditions of approval about, you know, equipment that would go into the tree canopy itself.
And, and that's why I was saying with the secant walls, we would be very wary of the equipment going into the canopy of the tree. And also it's, you know, sort of drilled down into the ground. And so there is no ability to look for roots and go around them. And so that's why staff would not suggest that method. But we also have Mike Napsiger from Public Works who may be able to better address this.
Both, both methods would go into the canopy at some, at some level. The second wall would tend to be more consistent along the whole, long whole excavation. Whereas a soldier beam and lagging would be basically drilling every four or six feet, depending on how it's designed. So there will be some penetration into the canopy. But like Jody mentioned, the second wall precludes any opportunity to observe any roots. It's, it's pretty direct.
And then the, the lagging though would still require pumping if there's water.
Yes, even the second wall would require some water removal. Once the wall's constructed, you're basically removing the residual water that's, you've trapped within it. It just takes longer for the water to come up underneath the second wall. So the flow rate's much lower. But the soldier beam lagging would require a traditional type of dewatering, lowering it down to about seven foot net.
All right, thank you. You have said for now.
Thank you, council member Ness.
So we sort of start at the beginning. So one of our speakers tonight said that they had looked at this house and there were any number of indications that there was a tree on the property that needed to be protected. What happened, and I don't know which staff to address this to. What happened between the time that somebody bought this with a tree that needed to be protected? And now we're here deep in a discussion about how do you protect a tree? That is of this duration and success and, and staying alive somehow in, in an urban area. How, how did this happen? Who, who knows what happened next?
So council member Ness, based on all the regulations that staff has at our disposal, this is not a heritage tree. It is a protected tree. And we have used the code to ensure that it is not being removed. And yes, there will be some impacts, the 17% that you heard about. But from all of our past experience, as long as we're removing less than 25%, then the tree still has the ability to remain healthy and survive. So those are the standards that we use on every project in the city.
So, and, and you're referencing the, the code. It's 10.8, 10.050, right?
Emily, maybe if you can bring up the slide, please. So there is, there was a slight error in the staff report as far as saying it was referring to 8.10D as in David. It should actually be, be as in boy. And it's, it does say, and, and this is, this is into the definitions of 810, talking about what is the definition of removal? Excessive pruning could be a version of removal. And then you see here at the bottom, the definition of excessive pruning is the removal of more than one-fourth of the functioning leaf and stem area of the tree in a 12-month period. And so that's what we are not doing. There is the 17% that's discussed in the arborist report, but that is less than the one-fourth.
Although I know there has been some discussion about this 8.10 and how it actually gets, how it actually gets interpreted. But let me go back to the first part where we clearly have an ordinance that, as you said, it protects the tree. This may not be a heritage tree, but it's protected. And it had been advertised as a lot with a protected tree. So I'm looking, I guess, back at you, Jody. When that comes to you, is there some comparison? How do you decide what you will approve of? If there is a tree, are, are you indicating that you believe that what you put out, that, that actually protects the tree?
Yes, to the best, to best of our ability, staff believes we have protected the tree. We are setting, the new house is more towards the front of the property. The portions of the existing basement are going to be retained. Everything is going to be hand dug. There's going to be an onsite arborist. There, there's been a fair amount of, of looking into this project to ensure that we have the appropriate conditions to ensure the tree survives. I mean, that, I, as best I know, that's everyone's desire is to maintain the oak tree.
Yes, I, I, yes, after 20 or 30 speakers tonight, yes, that certainly is the case. So if you looked at this, now several people have suggested, could, for safety, could it be a, a not as deep basement? Could it be, could it be eight feet instead of being what looks like it'll be close to 11? And, and maybe what, I think maybe I heard the applicant say that someone would live in the basement. I, maybe I misinterpreted.
I am not aware that there is an ADU proposed. Although, you know, another family member could live there. It doesn't have to be an independent unit. And so that may be their reasoning for the basement. That's not something that we're usually able to get into. As far as the basement being shorter, I mean, there, there's certainly, you could discuss ceiling heights. It's, it's only going to change it by a foot or so. Maybe that's enough, though, to not cause the dewatering. I know that we have had discussions, you know, with the applicant and they have already talked about, you know, doing the excavation during the dry season so that the groundwater is, is lower just sort of naturally.
So I, I hear what sounds like a very rational way to have a discussion about this. But we've heard any number of examples tonight of where there has been not a good outcome with the trees. And even though I think for the most part, staff does a good job. Walter Passmore, who's there tonight, and I have had a long discussion about the fact that my neighbor managed to kill the, the magnolia trees that were actually on city property. And any of you are welcome to drive by and look at the rather un-imposing new trees that have been put up. My point being that if something happens to this tree, you really cannot reverse it. And I think it sounds like everyone has done the best job they could. I would be far happier with this if the basement were not as deep as it is. And if we could look at the, as was put up on the slide some time ago, talk of an eight-foot basement instead. Go ahead, Adrian, we'll come back to all this.
Okay, thanks, council member. Next, I have council member Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. I want to be sure I understand the individual review guidelines, which is what we're reviewing tonight. And so I'm not sure which staff member should respond to this. But am I correct that they do not include tree health?
Ms. Gerhart can respond to that.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
I want to be sure I understand the individual review guidelines. And am I correct that they do not include tree health?
That is correct. The individual review guidelines talk about massing, streetscape, and privacy are the main points there. Sometimes with privacy, we're using landscape to achieve that. But that could be existing landscape or new landscape. That's not discussed in the guidelines.
And what about location and size of basements? Is that addressed in the individual review guidelines?
I know, that's actually not addressed at all. That's just covered in the municipal code.
And what about dewatering during construction? Is that addressed in the individual review guidelines?
I know, that's covered by our standard public works procedures.
Okay, great. Thank you for that, Ms. Gerhart. And then probably still back to you. I noticed as a condition of approval that the director is requiring daily arborist visits. To your knowledge, have we ever required daily arborist visits as a condition of approval?
I may have to turn that over to Walter and Emily. There were definitely some conditions added as part of the director's hearing to further ensure the health of the tree. So I don't know, Walter, if you know about the daily requirements.
Our standard is monthly arborist reports. I have never remembered applying daily inspections.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Passmore. And then again, not sure who this should go to. One of the emails we received was from Catherine Martineau, who's the executive director of Canopy. And she had three comments. Is staff able to address the comments that she provided? I, I believe that some of them would be later in the process than this evening, but.
I don't know that I have a copy of that letter.
Yeah, I'm afraid I'd have to look through our correspondence, perhaps to find that specific.
Okay, well, you know, for the next go-round, you know, if, there were, there were three suggestions, I believe, that she and Canopy had. And I know Canopy's been referenced earlier tonight. So I'd be interested in knowing if staff feels that now or later in the process that they would be able to address. Oh, Mr. Passmore looks like he has something to say.
May I? So Catherine Martineau sent the comment to council city manager and copied me. So I am able to say that those are fairly standard conditions that we apply at building permit. And they all seemed very reasonable. I would expect that we would apply those to the building permit.
Wonderful, that's so helpful. Thank you, Mr. Passmore, and that concludes my questions.
Thank you, council member Coop.
So thank you for asking that question, council member Cormac. I believe I'm, I'm glad to hear that Mr. Passmore said that these should be fairly easy to incorporate. Those were also, I believe, conditions that was reviewed by Canopy and by their expert, which used to be, used to be archery expert here in Palo Alto, Mr. Doctor. So I'd feel very comfortable with those included into the conditional approval. But, you know, in the part that states from the city that there is an arborist that goes to the site daily afterwards, at the end of day or whenever. But if the damage has been done, what's the purpose then? I mean, can the tree be damaged in a day and that, that could cause it to demise? You know, I would actually like to see somebody there all day until the demolition is finished. So that is one comment I wanted to make. Then the second one is, you know, the IR review, a lot of it is, there's a lot of discretionary in it, the decisions. And so I'm starting to wonder if maybe basements are also a discretionary decision since there isn't any of the prescriptive minimum or maximum size depths in, in the ordinance there. So if it's discretionary, then I would think that we can actually have a, have a say in how deep it should go, especially in this case because we have a tree, well, one, because we have a tree preservation ordinance. And also because the tree consideration should also have precedence. And it should, and, and these kind of conditions should vary by site. In this particular site, there is the tree there. So I think that we should have discretionary decisions about, about the basement. And, you know, if, if somebody wants to comment about that, I, it would help greatly in determining whether we even say yes to basement, no to basement, eight feet, you know, however many feet, how big it extends.
So council member, I'll just make some introductory comments and then the planning staff will, they, they have the details. There are rules about basements in our code and they're, they're ministerial. So they're not part of the IR review process. But there are certainly requirements, quite a few requirements in the code around basements. Ms. Gerhart, do you have further comments?
I, yes. As you said, the basements are discussed in the municipal code 181290. It does talk about basements must be under the building footprint so they don't extend into the backyard or front yard. You are allowed to have light wells and below-grade patios. But there's lots of limitations on how large those can be and where they can be. And there, there really isn't much more than that. You know, there's some conversation about how far up the basement can be out of the ground. But that wouldn't change this particular project.
Although in this code, it says nothing about depth. So in a way, I believe that, so in this, in this discussion, because there is an impact to a tree that we do have an obligation to preserve. So I think that, I mean, it opens for us to discuss depth. And also in terms of what council would like to see, how deep it can go or how deep it should go. And so I just want to put that on the table. I, I really actually do believe that, you know, the applicant and their architect are smitten with the tree and do want to do something in order to protect the tree. And so I would hope that, you know, in this case that we're working with in good faith in order to protect it. And to show good faith, you know, I think that maybe perhaps we can look into a bond in order to ensure the, the health and its continued survival, this tree's continued survival. So for now, I think those are my comments, but I would, I would like those, I mean, when the time comes, I'd like to see those points being. I would like those, I mean, when the time comes, I'd like to see those um points being considered.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, council member Koo. Uh, council member Tanaka.
So we heard uh two sets of expert, two sets of tree experts. We have one from the project and one from uh the pellet. And I guess I heard very different opinions from both. I guess that's kind of natural because they're on different sides, but I mean, how much of this is science and how much of this is guesswork? And which one, how do we know what is, which one, what is the truth, like the real sense of truth? Because you would think that we should know, I mean, I'm sure that trees have been dug up before, and we know what the root structure kind of looks, and is it pretty random? I I guess I'll just love to get staff's opinion, because we heard two sets of people who were very different, very different opinions. So I don't know, I mean, maybe this is something for uh Walter Passmore or someone, but it's, it's I mean, they're like opposite opinions, right?
Yes, I would ask Mr. Passmore to address that, and um we we do have those arborists available. If you have questions, direct to them. This afternoon, and so we don't have any written reports, I don't think, from that arborist. Perhaps we do. But we do have the written reports, I believe, from the um applicant's arborist. Walter, did you want to address that? Um, how to understand the science of of trees?
So none of the arborists that uh reported or talked to council did so based on specific data about the underground root structure of the tree. They were speaking in generalities, and those generalities are very much influenced by soil type. So roots basically grow where they can find air and water, where they can gather the nutrients that they need to survive. So I do not disagree with any of the generalities that were stated. But again, those are not based on specific data. There was no ground penetrating radar to find where the actual root structure of the tree is located, so we we need to take all of that with a grain of salt.
So, I mean, do we know generally how root structures are in our city, given the kind of clay or soil? Like, what generally happen? Is it, is it a deep taproot, or is it, you know, something that's just mainly on the on the surface? Uh, because we, we heard two different set of opinions of experts, which you would think that there'd be some sort of I mean, there'd be some sort of consensus, but they're such different opinions.
Right. So again, it's, it's largely based on soil type. And we did hear from the engineer that they identified the soil on this particular site as a high-clay soil, which would indicate that most of the root structure is concentrated in the top reaches of the soil. Because going deeper, it would be anaerobic, and it would not allow the the roots to gather water and nutrients because of the lack of air. So we would suspect there's very few structural roots on this tree that go deep.
So the other thing I want to ask, and this is for staff, which is is it, I I know that we have front setback rules, but this is kind of a very unusual property, because we have this, this uh very beautiful tree in the backyard. But can the house be moved forward any, or can the basement move forward any? Maybe perhaps even into the front setback. And so I don't know whether we have authority to do that, or whether it's even physically practical to do this, but I'm just wondering whether, whether the construction can be moved away as a possibility. But I don't know, I don't know about the practical realities of of this. And so I don't know if staff could um could talk about that, but I know that it seems, I I think, everyone we heard from, I think everyone wants to make sure that this tree is protected. Uh, so I don't think there's any doubt about that. I think even the owners probably want that too. But I'm just wondering, you know, given this, this is a very old tree. Uh, I don't think anyone wants to see it die. So I'm just wondering, is it, is that a, is that a possibility to do, to um, to try to give this a better chance?
Um, so we did look at the project and felt like we could protect the tree without um doing such a thing. But absolutely, um, a variance is possible. If council um wanted to ask us to look at a smaller front setback. Um, unfortunately, that variance, um, you know, has not been applied for, has not been advertised. Staff would need to, you know, think through the findings for that variance. But that, that would be the vehicle to do such a thing.
So during my office hours, I also got um the comment of some sort of bond for the tree, right? Where um, if the tree, let's say, dies after ten years or something like that, maybe that there's some sort of fine or some sort of you know, so there's like incentive to make sure the tree stays alive. Although I would suspect that losing a tree like this on your property would greatly decrease the value of your property. So I think there's probably incentive just in that, but but is there, has that ever been done in um either in our city or other cities? And if so, how could that be structured, and and doesn't even make sense? So it was a suggestion that someone made during one of my office hours, but I don't know whether that's practical, makes sense, or it's even legal. But if so, how would that happen?
So we do have um a security deposit that's talked about in the tree technical manual. Um, and I think Walter can probably give some more details on that.
Right. The tree technical manual does allow us to collect a security deposit for special circumstances. We have never done it for residential project, but it doesn't mean that we couldn't. Uh, our, our policy does allow for that. And as such, uh, I prepared an appraised value for Jody this morning. The tree technical value uh manual, I'm sorry, allows us to collect twenty-five to one hundred percent as a security. Uh, so the appraised value of the tree is sixty-four thousand dollars, so somewhere between uh sixteen and sixty-four thousand is what we could collect as a deposit.
Has this done, has this been done before in our city, or would this be the first time?
It has been done, but not for a residential project, only for commercial projects in the past.
Am I out of time? Otherwise, I'll go on to the next round.
Yeah, you're five minutes.
I'll go on to next round. Thank you.
All right, thank, thank you, everyone. Um, just two or three questions here. So one, what is um council's authority tonight on on this matter? There's, there is a recommendation from council, or from staff, sorry, to adopt uh adopt the findings and approve the pro-proposed project. So what is council's range of authority here tonight?
Maybe I'll start with that one, and then the planning staff can assist. Um, so your authority is bounded by the individual review program that Palo Alto has uh followed for a number of years for second stories of um single-family homes in uh the residential neighborhoods. And there are um a number of uh areas in um the individual review guidelines that are appropriate for consideration. Ms. Gerhart referred to them, massing, scale, privacy, um those kinds of things. And you should um deny the appeal and approve the director's position uh uh director's approval um unless you can't make those findings, um and then your action should be based on the individual review guidelines.
Okay.
Ms. Gerhart, do you have anything to add?
I, no, I I think um that that is correct. We make sure that the project um adheres to the municipal code, um including, you know, Title Eight. And we make sure that it it adheres to the IR guidelines, and we believe it has.
Okay, so sitting in our quasi-judicial role um and through the IR process, if we can make the five findings of the IR guidelines, we should reject the appeal and approve the project. If we can't make those five findings, uh, then we need to identify which finding we cannot make. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Um, can we go to page uh eight of the staff report, please?
Uh, Emily, are you able to do that, or I can share my screen?
I'm sure if I have a minute.
Mayor Fine, is it the packet page or the staff member page?
Uh, it's the staff presentation. Director hearing slash this decision.
The presentation you're asking for? Okay. I have that one second.
One more, I think. That's it, I think.
Yeah.
Okay. So the director of planning and development and our team in City Hall found that this project was in compliance with the municipal code, correct?
Correct.
And our staff found that it was in compliance with the IR design guidelines, one through five?
Correct.
Okay. Dewatering, basements, and trees are not part of the individual review guidelines, as council member Cormac asked, correct?
Correct. They are um ministerial and handled through the building permit.
Okay. Um, and then I was hoping could staff briefly describe the tree protection plan for for this oak?
If we go, I think, Emily, is this your slides? If we go back a couple screens. Back too far. There we go. Um, so you're
One more.
Um, so you're seeing here the tree protection zone. Um, if you're seeing the slide four, that's the existing house and the tree, and you'll see the tree protection zone in green. That is a sixty-foot um tree protection zone. And uh anytime that excavation, construction, anything of that sort is done within the tree protection zone, uh, then we are much more careful about how we do that. Um, in this case, you know, we're asking about uh using hand tools, having supervision, uh, having parts of the foundation remain. Um, those are just some of the conditions that are applied to this project.
Would would the city arborist care to add anything on this point? I'm just hoping to understand, um, you know, in our view, is this tree protection plan sufficient and warranted? Given this project and and the tree.
So each tree protection plan is customized to the project. This one exceeded the minimum requirements. And so we feel that it is sufficient to prevent damage that would result in death or permanent damage to the tree.
Walter, can you expand on some of those elements of the tree protection plan that are, make it above and beyond what's required normally?
Sure. So typically, you know, we would not require a foundation to be retained within the tree protection zone, but we wanted to minimize the amount of change for this one, so the applicant agreed to do that. There was a previous question about daily inspections. That's uh the first that I've ever heard of where we have inspections at that frequency. So very intensive arborist supervision. Maybe I'm not recalling all of the the special conditions off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
It's okay, but but what you're getting at is is this goes above and beyond our standard protection measures. Um, and staff believes it's it's adequate and and correctly tailored to protect this tree.
Correct, but it's it's appropriate for this tree. I think staff has recognized all along that we needed to do something extra to protect this very large and special tree.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Those were my perfect timing. Um, so I think that concludes our first round, and as I said, um, I think our second round will be open up to motions. And we may want to do a time check. Uh, it's ten twenty. I think we can get through this and the utilities issue. Just nod if you agree. If not, we can kick something out, but I'm seeing mostly nods. At least from two of you. Okay. Um, once we're done with this, we we can get to the the next utilities item, but let's let's try to finish this off. Um, so I'm going to open it up to uh questions, comments, and motions. I saw a couple hands in a row, some council members Koo, Vice Mayor DeBois, Phil Seth, and Miss. Council member Koo.
Um, so I heard um Mr. Passmore say that there um that the other arborists were speaking in generalities. And that the tree roots does not go that deep. So how, so have we, as a city, done the ground penetrating radar in order to know that those roots don't go that deep?
So, council member Koo, we have not performed
So, so actually, we don't know if those roots are actually shallow or deep, right? Or, I mean, I'm just trying to confirm, because you know, the other arborist says something, and then Mr. Passmore says that they don't go that deep.
We, we've only done ground penetrating radar on one project in the city um in the eight years that I've been here. Um, and that was um on the El Camino. There was a hotel on El Camino with a a bunch of redwoods. And that was the reason that we had done that. We haven't done it any other time.
Council member Koo, if you did want to speak with the arborist, she is on the line still, if you had a question for her about her evaluation.
Uh, no, I've heard her evaluation. I heard Mr. Levinson's evaluation as well, you know. Obviously, they're contradicting, but then when we have our arborist from our city just basically saying that they spoke in generalities. But we don't know if it is, which one is true at this point, because we haven't done the evidence of fact-checking ourselves, right? So potentially, the groundwater dewatering could hurt the roots. It may not have enough water. And then also to say seventeen percent of the tree um roots you know, can be taken away, and it won't, it won't damage the tree. Yeah, and the fact is, you know, there has been other trees in this city that has been, that had structures built by it, and within a certain time, they died, or they, it it just caused their demise. So, you know, I really have a lot of concerns about this. And, you know, while we're talking about, you know, as council member Cormac and council member Fine and a lot of staff have pointed out, this is about IR. But this report also brings to attention, uh, it does talk about conditions for protecting the tree. So to say that we're not allowed to speak about it, I find that rather strange, you know, that what, are we not allowed to add more conditions to this in order to protect the tree? You know, it it's open for us to do so if you include it in here as conditions. So that's my comments for now. Um, I have to figure out how to go about making a motion. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor DeBois.
Um, so first of all, I do want to thank the applicant. Uh, I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name, but Ms. Ms. Sal, uh, for trying to protect the tree. I I appreciate you've worked with our staff, could try to come up with a plan. I, having gone to look at it, it really is an awesome tree, and uh it's protected by our tree ordinance. And as you heard tonight, it means a lot to a lot of people in town, so I hope we can find a way, an agreeable way to save the tree and move the project forward. And so as I think about this, I think there's several areas of question. There's the extent and scale of the house under the IR guidelines. There's the arborist report and kind of what, what does this tree need? But there's interpretation of our tree protection ordinance. And then there's a potential to impose additional conditions of approval, I think, related to the tree health. So on the extent, extent and scale of the house, it is a large house. I I think it is a little bit out of character with the neighborhood um in terms of compatibility, you know, height, mass, scale. Potentially even uh finding number three, which is uh massing. So I would find it tough, tough to find finding number two, possibly number three. You know, but what I'm hearing from the neighborhood is concerns about the tree. And so I think if we can save the tree, that seems to be the primary concern. You know, we heard that removal means permanent damage to twenty-five percent of the roots. Staff is saying seventeen percent, but we don't really know where the roots are. And, you know, we heard this is all estimates, so it seems risky for this type type of tree in in this case. I understand that the basement's not part of the FAR, but I'm wondering if the applicant would consider either a smaller basement that's further away from the tree. either a smaller basement that's further away from the tree, or maybe where Councilmember Niss was starting to go would be less depth into the ground, avoiding the water table. And potentially maybe the basement extends above the ground, which we heard is part of our basement ordinance. You know, and so maybe there's a sweet spot there where we wouldn't need to de-water and potentially harm the tree, and, you know, we have been in a drought again this year. Terms of the arborist, what trees need, I mean, we heard disagreement tonight between arborists. It's not really unusual to hear disagreements between consultants on a project. We heard one arborist who say that groundwater isn't used by the tree, that it gets water from two to three feet down, which I believe would be impacted by groundwater pumping. We heard another arborist say that they do use groundwater. And I also personally heard that from Dave Muffley, which I mentioned in my disclosure. So I do think maybe more testing and consideration of where the water table is could be warranted. You know, if we do hit the water table, it could mean a lot of pumping. On the tree protection ordinance, you know, there was some discussion about which sections apply. I think on a plain reading, I believe that section B applies. And even trying to do the calculation for section D, if it were to apply, it appears that the applicant could have a maximum FAR of thirty-one, thirty-four square feet. The project that was approved was twenty-nine, thirty-five square feet, so it seems like they're really getting the maximum development out of this site. So it's not obvious to me how the argument can be made that the retention of the tree would result in the reduction of usable FAR when they're really getting what's permitted under a single-family home. In terms of conditions of approval, I did, I do think we heard from one member of the public tonight that said that what it says on the tree protection paperwork isn't necessarily what happens in the field. And so given the importance of the tree, I do think we should consider additional consistent conditions of approval. When we get to motions, I have several. But the biggest one, and it's recommended in bold, our condition of approval, one C, says all recommendations from the arborist report. And on the arborist report, if you look at pages six and seven, there's some recommendations in bold as well as the rest of that summary. And I think a lot of those should be made explicit in the conditions of approval, not just referred to in the arborist report. And it included things like demolition completed by hand within the building footprint. You know, the arborist said no demolition plan was present, I think, again, a lot of the concern is what happens during construction. Existing soil moisture be mimicked throughout the demolition and construction. The root protection and matting be provided, that water and that the roots be kept wet and covered if they were being exposed to sunlight during digging. There's a whole list of these. And then one other one that was brought up was, you know, changing the duration maybe of the tree appraisal. So, you know, if we're talking about a three-hundred or four-hundred-year-old tree, you know, I think the tree appraisal direction should be more like fifteen years rather than like five years. Quick question on staff, there is a reference to tiebacks. I mean, would tiebacks be allowed in any of these construction methods?
I can speak to that. For a single-level basement, tiebacks would not be needed. Two levels and more, tiebacks would be used.
Yeah, so I thought maybe a condition of approval would be no tiebacks, certainly on the sides closest to the tree, sounds like they're not needed.
No.
There's nothing in the conditions of approval that speaks to the use of cranes under the canopy. I don't know if we've ever had those kinds of conditions, it seemed like, again, those would be important considerations.
It is five minutes.
Yeah. So Mike, was there any?
We've never imposed conditions on crane activity. We haven't had a case quite like this, but we could make sure that the contractor is educated to the sensitivity of mobilizing cranes around the canopy.
Great. I think I pretty much covered the gist of my thought, like, again, so when we get to motions, I have several specific conditions of approval. So I'll stop there.
Thank you. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Thanks. I'm sure this is a really dumb question, but if in fact all the roots of the tree are in the first two feet, then how much difference does it make whether the water table's at ten feet or fourteen feet?
I believe Councilmember Phil said that was the argument of the project arborist, which is that, and I think Mr. Passmore kind of confirmed that the roots tend to be perhaps in the first two to four feet, I think he said ninety percent. And so the water sources are not groundwater, I believe is what the indication was. Walter, do you want to add to that?
No, that's an accurate synopsis, thank you.
So if I understand what you just said, dewatering is irrelevant, right? The only issue is, you know, sort of the radius and how many, how many of the roots are within the footprint of the house?
That would be, I think, a way to look at the issue.
So why are we talking about, I mean, I'm missing something here, why are we talking about dewatering at all?
I believe that the appellants have raised that as a significant issue that they see as a challenge to the project, kind of the constructability or what happens during construction of this project as a potential danger to the tree. And their assessment of what might endanger the tree.
Okay. I hear some pretty careful wording going on here that I'm trying to parse, okay?
Well, the appellate has raised the issue, and we've, you know, been working with them through the director's hearing and as has the applicant to address their concerns with dewatering and what might damage the tree, and so that has been a discussion.
Okay, so if, if I hear, if I can rephrase what I just heard, okay? If in fact ninety percent of the roots of the tree are within the first two or three or four feet of the surface, then dewatering's not an issue, okay? So why would we not, for example, go get some ground penetrating radar, find out for sure, and then we would know?
I think as Mr. Passmore suggested, we have not had a tradition of requiring applicants to use that technology for a tree.
Okay. But so the opinion of the city arborist is that ninety percent of the roots are within the first two to four feet of the surface and therefore dewatering is a non-issue in this case. I think that's what I just heard.
Walter, do you want to speak for your own opinion? But I do believe that's what we've heard.
I think that's the most likely scenario, is that dewatering will not be a significant impact.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Councilmember, next I have Councilmember Niss.
I think this one is troubling to deal with, and parts of it are bothering me, so I think we, I think what we need to do is get something out on the table. Before I actually make a motion where I'm headed, I want to ask, and I don't know who wants to answer this, but Tom said that perhaps in working with the applicant, we could talk about an eight-foot basement versus the deeper basement that's already, already suggested. And is there a way that we can do that, or do we simply need to have, do we have to make the motion and then discuss it with them later? I think what, I think, Tom, not to put words in your mouth, but you were saying maybe reasonable people can come up with a rational solution. Would you nod if I'm getting close?
I don't think I said a number, but I said, yeah, a less deep basement, maybe part of the basement extends above the ground.
Yeah, but you suggested not negotiate, having a conversation about it, correct?
Yes, if the, I don't know if the applicant's still online or on the meeting, but yes.
I don't know if they can make a decision that easily either.
Reminder to everyone, this is a quasi-judicial matter, we are adjudicating a project before us. I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I realize, you said no negotiation. So in that case, then, I think what I'm going to do is suggest that we include in this the following conditions of approval. And just let me take a look at my notes in front of me. So I think I'm going to start a motion, I would move the following, and see if I get a second to this, that we add to the conditions of approval. First of all, Catherine Martin knows recommendations that came, I think, and Walter, you had a copy of those. And reduce the basement depths to eight feet, which includes the exterior wall. And also, a condition, and this doesn't quite fit in, so I'd be glad to have it reworded, which would include that if the applicant wishes, they could go up two feet from the ground. So let me pause there for a second or not a second, and then go from here.
So there's a motion on the table by Councilmember Niss. Apologies, I don't think I caught the whole thing, but maybe did the clerk, and do we have it typed up that we can display for folks?
I second.
Okay, do you want to wait until it's written out?
Sure.
Councilmember Niss, do you want to reiterate your motion, please?
Let me, I have a, hang on for a second until I can see this. Also, to add, to add Catherine Martin knows recommendation. And somebody had a copy of that tonight. We can put it in the motion if you wish, if not, we can simply put it in as what Catherine sent to all of us. And then C would be to allow the, to allow the plants to go two feet from the, from the, from the ground, essentially from what would normally be the bottom of the house, to go up another two feet, if they're concerned about an eight-foot basement.
Does your motion include anything about the project, whether we are accepting the appeal or rejecting it, because so far I just see.
Not yet.
So you're just, well, you're adding, you're adding conditions of approval to a unapproved project.
Exactly, exactly. Which may not be, may not be the usual way to do it, but let's see where it goes.
Okay, and Councilmember Koo, is this acceptable to you?
To allow the plants to go up an additional two feet from, oh, I see.
This would allow the basement to be ten feet.
Jody, I see her hands are up, well, her hand, one hand.
I just wanted to ask a question about the eight feet, is that an interior dimension or a total dimension?
Total dimension, total. It won't, it wouldn't make any difference if it wasn't the total. It needs to go, we're trying to save the tree. And so what I'm trying to do is present something that the applicant might be comfortable with. And it sounds as though the applicant wants that depth, and I don't know why in particular, but it must be, you know, for whatever reason, they've designed it into the plan.
So council members, you're going to want to hear from, both from planning staff and from other city staff and from the applicant and their team about any potential feasibility and impacts of changes like this, to the extent they're able to tell you that on the fly this evening. It'll be important to hear from all those folks.
And, okay, so we do have this motion by Councilmember Niss, seconded by Councilmember Koo. I will just emphasize again, you're adding conditions of approval to a project which has not been approved or denied, so it's kind of just like, these three conditions ain't going nowhere fast.
As Molly just said, you know, that we want to hear from finding staff as well as from the applicant. So I think that that's something that we're hoping to do.
I understand that, and that will be important, but I'm just saying, like, these are three conditions for a project that is still before us, and the motion has nothing about approving the project, rejecting it. And I think that would be contingent, frankly. So.
Adrian, I think you're suggesting the motion would approve the project subject to these following changes.
That's, I think that would be a little smoother, even if, you know, we agree or disagree on these letters A, B, and C, but right now, well. So Councilmember Niss, is that acceptable to you? I'm just trying to get us a motion that's actually workable, rather than just three conditions hanging out.
So you're saying to add to the conditions of approval subject to, and then the language there?
I think, I think the Vice Mayor good language is, which is approve the project subject to these new conditions.
Councilmember Niss?
And we've seemed to have lost Councilmember Niss, I'm sure she'll join back in. So we can't change the motion like that yet, but perhaps let's go to staff if they have any thoughts on A, B, and C, presuming a project approval.
Right, I want to start with letter C, and I know Councilmember Niss is not here. It's unclear if the goal is to have the basement level like above ground a little bit, or if the whole house is two feet taller, I'm not clear what that additional two feet is added to. So that would be helpful and probably helpful before the applicant responds to fully understand what that idea is. In addition, Ms. Martin knows conditions are typically part of the building permit process, which is a separate process, so I would have to say I'm not sure, and perhaps Mike Naf singer can address if this would preclude anything that may need to happen during the building permit phase that just quite frankly hasn't occurred yet, because they're not at that phase of development in the project, so Mike hopefully can speak to that. And lastly, for letter A, you know, minimum ceiling height is seven feet, so eight feet, depending on what kind of the interstitial material of the ceiling of that basement is and kind of the thickness of that, and how it's constructed. Eight feet, you know, could be a basement that is usable and habitable. But again, the applicant's comfort with that would need to be addressed by the applicant. Mike, can you address anything for letter B in terms of if that's okay in this phase of the project's development?
Sure, I think that, as I mentioned before, a standard one-level habitable basement, an eight-foot ceiling would have about a twelve-foot total excavation, that's from ground surface to bottom of excavation. And that typically provides an eight-foot ceiling. To get an eight-foot ceiling with an eight-foot excavation, you're going to have to come up out of the ground with the basement. Eight-foot excavation would provide probably less than six-foot ceiling, one slab and floor joists are installed. If that makes any sense, it would raise the height of the house and the massing of the house.
And I would ask that if we're, if we're talking about raising the house up from the ground level, we do need to take a look at the IR guidelines, because all of that analysis would change.
I think that it would be approved. It would be found to be consistent with the findings if the council goes forward with this.
So I can answer for Councilmember Niss, you know, on the two feet above ground and the eight. My concern with, my agreement with the eight feet is because Mr. Naf singer said that, and correct me if I'm wrong, with the eight-feet depth, it would actually have to excavate twelve to thirteen feet, which is pretty deep. So if you have a ten-foot depth, then what is it digging into, what is the excavation then, which is even deeper, right?
For taller ceilings, interior finished floor to ceiling level, an eight-foot dimension would, would need about a twelve to thirteen-foot total excavation. So for a ten-foot ceiling, you'd push that down another two feet or so. We typically don't allow basements to pop up out of the ground, but that would be an option to preserve livables, ceiling height with a minimal excavation.
I mean, the other option is just to eliminate the basement altogether, and so.
Since this is an IR project, basements are not part of the guidelines.
Well, it doesn't speak about depth, so, you know, that could be a discretionary matter that we could take up. Well, it doesn't speak about depth, so, um, you know, that could be a discretionary matter that we could take up. Yeah, so I, I don't know if council member Niss has.
I am back.
Okay, thank you. There was a question and.
It was a little spooky.
So did, I don't know, what was the question for council member Niss?
You know, thank you, Lydia, for picking up the slack. I appreciate it. So at this point, we've added to, um, approve the project.
It's up to you. I, I am suggesting that to say approve the project with the following conditions added.
Okay, got it, yes.
Planning staff mentioned, these conditions are kind of beyond this step in the project and that they will. I guess be out of that building approvals step.
What I was trying to say, Mayor Fine, is that letter B, those subpoints, A, B, and C are often part of the building permit process. So I just was confirming with Mike to his knowledge if those would be problematic to have. As conditions at this point in time. Um, and then council member Niss, we were trying to get clarity on letter C. If you were suggesting that the, the building can be two feet higher and the basement can pop out of the ground by two feet? Or if there was some other suggestion with the allowing the plan to add an additional two feet from the ground.
I watched for a minute.
Oh, sorry, it, it was just a question about letter C. What do you mean by adding additional two feet from the ground? Is that the total height of the building can be two feet taller? Is that that the basement can?
That.
Be above the ground by two feet?
Well, we have a limit to the height of the building. So we can't, we can't allow them to go up. We can't allow them to go, you know, another two feet higher for the, for the second story. Is that what your question is?
I, I'm, the question is just, what do you mean by letter C? It's not clear what you mean by letter C.
To allow them to have a deeper basement. So many houses in our, in our neighborhood are built up a couple of feet, sometimes three or four feet. So that I'm fairly sure that they could go up two feet from the ground.
May I ask for clarification? Does that mean that they can still have their 10 foot ceiling? You know, with eight feet in underground and then the two feet that they're asking for, um, for a 10 foot ceiling to be above ground? Is that what your intention is, council member?
That's my intention, yes. I don't know how else to get to, to 10 feet.
So you're trying to grant them that 10 foot ceiling in their basement?
Trying to get the 10 foot ceiling, but, but keep the eight foot basement. My whole goal here is to save this tree or to at least give the tree a fighting chance long term. I'm, I'm still pretty stunned that. That when they bought this, they knew about the tree and the tree protection and yet have continued the basement. But we're, we are, we are dealing the cards we were dealt.
Yeah, so I think that, um, we're counsel to go forward with this, um, motion and pass it. You know, it, it is a significant change in terms of, you know, the I, the, the house that we've reviewed, um, in that. Again, we'd have to figure out how to come, have letter C, um, conform. With the way that the house is currently constructed or proposed to be built, rather. And of course, we may want to hear from the applicant about their amenability to these conditions.
And that, it may be that that's nothing they're interested in. In that case, we could just simply erase it. We could simply, you know, take it from the, from the approval. I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to salvage what they're looking for at this point and, and deal with the tree at the same time.
Absolutely. I just want to make sure that the council is aware of kind of the intersecting pieces of this motion with. The IR guidelines themselves and the project that has been, um, considered and is on appeal.
It's a little bit, it's a little sausagey.
Okay, in the, in, in the interest of moving us forward, I, I want to see if anybody else on staff has any comments about this. Specifically thinking of, of our city attorney.
Um, Mr. Mayor, just that it, after you hear from staff, it is going to be very important to hear from the applicant and their team.
Okay. Um, anyone else on staff, planning, uh, urban forestry? Comments on this?
I, I would like to just show the streetscape, uh, for a minute. This is, you know, we review over a hundred, uh, two-story houses a year. And so we try and be consistent in how we apply the guidelines. And one of the things that we do, um, in guideline number two, there is a key point, um, that talks about. Locating upper floors well back from the front facade and/or away from the side lot lines if the house. Is adjacent to a single story. And so you'll see on the left-hand side here, we do have a single-story house. And so in those situations, um, we are many times trying to keep some space under that daylight plane. In order to pull the house back, um, from that single-story home. So I just want to make sure that we think through, um, those revised IR findings. If we are, um, allowing this house to be increased in height.
And so what you're saying is increasing by two feet changes the massing and. The scale and, and the shade and elevations, uh, so it's kind of rejiggering everything else in the IR.
Correct.
Okay. I guess let's go to the applicant. If the applicant would like to comment on this, on the proposed motion, let's maybe go back to that. Motion on the screen and invite the applicant and her team to write any comments.
So Ms. Zhao and Ms. Pavlovic, if you would like to respond.
Honestly, we are trying to process all the comments from the council members who. I'm afraid did not understand. The input from. The professional, um, team that has brought this project to your attention. First thing is. I have to consult with my client before I give you any answers, obviously. Uh, second, if, um, we increase the height of the. Building, we will violate the, uh, daylight plane, as Jody pointed out. And I honestly don't understand. If both city arborists and three other arborists agreed that this tree does not have the roots beyond. Two to four feet due to clay content of the soil. Why are we discussing the depth of the basement at this point?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so there is a motion on the table. We return to council. Council members, uh, Niss and Ku, I'm going to move on to the others. Have their hands up. Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, so I see council member Tanaka, Vice Mayor DeBois, Cormac, and Phil Seth. I'll just note to everybody, it's approaching 11 o'clock. We still have one more item and I see two of our, uh, utilities commissioners with us. Thank you all. So brevity is appreciated.
So just wanted to continue my questions. So can the appellate, is the appellate arbors still on the call? I don't know if he is or not. Does anyone know?
He said he, uh, went to bed. I could try to get a hold of him.
Okay.
But I, I, I'm willing to tell you what he told me.
Well, I, I guess, um, I was listening to Walter Passmore's comment, right? And I, I wanted to kind of see if, if your arborist had a rebuttal to that. Because it, it seemed very different from our city's arborist. So, but so I don't, I don't know if you were able to do that or not.
So in the, in the, if I pull up my presentation, I can show you the excerpts from his letter to, that, that we have. And maybe that's the best way to answer it. So here is my, uh, presentation. Are you guys seeing it? Am I sharing it properly or not?
Not yet.
Not yet. What do I need to do? How do I, let's see, what do I, what do I need to do to share in here?
Perhaps you can do that again.
So I'm in slideshow. Can you see anything?
The green share screen at the bottom.
Okay.
Of Zoom.
Yes, I got, I see it. Okay. Now let's do this. Okay, so this is his comments on the root system death. Oak root systems often exhibit a large number of sinker roots.
Wait, I, I think you're not showing your screen.
Well, since council member, well, since he's just quoting, perhaps.
Oh, here it is. Is this it?
I'll just read it. Oak root systems often exhibit a large number of sinker roots which plunge downward from along the lengths of the horizontally oriented lateral woody roots. Oaks are typically adapted to drought conditions through a use of these deeper vertically oriented roots. And therefore they are literally tapped into the groundwater cable as a moisture supply. For Stone and Colley's, 1991, the maximum extent of oak roots from two species was found to be at extreme depth compared to commonly stated. Pre-rooting depth limits of two to four feet. Um, and there's also a paper in, um, Wikipedia says that valley oats. Require, uh, con, year-round access to groundwater. Um, the next statement was groundwater at the site. Um, he said it is very likely that the subject oak tree has tapped into this water supply and is to some a depend, degree dependent upon that water. I think what happens is during the winter and spring. The oak trees use the surface roots. And in the fall, the summer and fall, when the surface in this area is dry, they rely on deeper, on the deeper root system. So they use one set of roots during one part of the year, another set of roots during the other part of the year. Because we know we don't water oak, valley oak trees normally. This is the measured drop of the groundwater at 2151 Byron, which was seven and a half feet. That's consistent with what, um, Mike Napf Fisher said. And that construction is very similar to this one. And then this is his comments, Walter Levinson's comments on dewatering. Basement construction requiring dewatering operations at 2353 Webster Street as currently proposed. May have a severe negative impact on the subject oak number five. If dewatering were to occur as proposed for a three-month-long period, as stated in the city manager's report. The ability of oak number five to access the water table would be significantly reduced, possibly damaging the subject tree over the longer term. Per city of follow-up those guidelines, this would be a non allowable impact. What I know about groundwater here is it's been possible to build many baits, at least three basements within the last couple of years. Without requiring excavation and normally this is possible with a. Depth to the, uh, top of this basement surface of about a eight feet and with an excavation depth. To about nine and a half feet, um, because if you can probably get by with a thinner slab if you don't have so much weight. That's my, uh, comment and the, uh.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, we got the letter, but I guess it's just. I don't know whether the arborist, uh, factored in the soil conditions. And so it's unfortunate that he's not on the call, but I, I don't know, Walter, when you, you saw that letter, right? What's, what's your response?
Tonight is the first time I've seen the letter.
Oh, okay.
Walter Levinson stated that the report was prepared today. And the quote does say, in general, these are things that valley oaks do. There is no specific mention that he had visited this site, that he had reviewed soils reports for this site. You know, we can speak in generalities, but. It, it doesn't really help us make a decision on this specific. That he had visited this site, that he had reviewed soils reports for this site. You know, we can speak in generalities, but. It, it doesn't really help us make a decision on this specific project. And, and I agree with, with Walter on that. No one really knows what's going on this project. The soils here are a layer of, of plays and gravel. Alluvial gravel, and we know that because that's why we get so much groundwater. When we, when we dewater. And so I think the, the, the facts of the situation is nobody really knows for sure what's going on. But this particular oak tree and this environment, and so it's a question of risk.
Keith, you happen to know if the arborist saw the soil report?
I know he did not.
He did not.
That's correct.
I, I mean, I know it's late, but if you ever get him on the phone, that'd be awesome.
I will try. I.
It's five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, so, um, I think we're speaking to the motion, right, towards a process. So the applicant asked, I think, why was there a motion about the basement? Uh, I think the makers should probably answer that question, but I believe it's because, because of what council member Tanaka was just pushing on. Which is the experts seem to disagree. About how the base, basement will impact the tree. And so when I read this motion, I think it's trying to say. Um, avoid hitting groundwater and the need for pumping. So if the depth could be adjusted to not hit groundwater. The project, you know, the motion would approve your project. I do think maybe we could combine A and C. It's a little bit odd to have those. I think those are really trying to go together. It may be, I don't know if the numbers should be there, but I think the concept. It's, it's more about the concept, I think. I have, um, I have some friendly, a friendly amendment, which, uh. Let me, let me email this to the county clerk real quick. So the, the amendment is really. Two parts. Sorry. So it would be a, uh, letter D, I guess. Which would be to modify the conditions of approval to, um. Add the conditions referred to in, in one dot C to the conditions of approval directly. So one dot C refers to the arborist report, but again, I emailed this to you if, uh, if you could check. Because there's three parts to it, so. The, so there's three things. There to make explicit the conditions of approval that are in the arborist report. To change condition 30. To having an arborist on site, not, not just daily during the demolition phase. Uh, which seems to be one of the most sensitive phases. And condition 32. Which is to change the tree appraisal duration, uh, to 10 years, uh, from five years. So, uh, those, those are all part of number D. And I could speak to those if those were acceptable to the maker.
So there's a proposed amendment, letters D there by the vice mayor, council member Niss.
Yes, I, I think the idea of the arborist on site is a great one. I, I'd like to see that. It sounds as though, before we go on though, that we ought to take C out. Because I think what I've heard is that's going to alter any number of issues that deal with the house. Is that correct? I think essentially I heard the applicant say, take it out.
I think from a staff perspective, um, if the house was to go up, um, a foot or so. Um, I think we could still easily make the findings.
Well, shall we say an additional foot?
So Liz, could you maybe combine A and C to maybe direct staff to, or. Again, I think we need the applicant to comment on this, but.
If I could see the top, hang on a second. Yes, that, that could be included. Reduce the basement depths to eight feet. And allow the, um, allow a, an above-ground additional one foot.
Yeah, but I'm wondering if it could even be more flexible depending where the groundwater is.
Hmm, how, what are you thinking?
Vice Mayor, I would not want to, I mean, the challenge of conditioning that's groundwater. There's no scenario of excavation that doesn't require dewatering. That the depths that we're going to be going for this basement. So if the. that the depths that we're going to be going for this basement. So if the, the goal is to avoid dewatering completely, then that's not going to be achieved through this. And my understanding is the goal is to minimize risk to roots that may or may not be at these depths by having the depths be less and having the excavation be less, but dewatering still be required for this basement.
Which is unfortunate.
So I also really want to remind us, uh, of our authority tonight, which is evaluating this project in light of the IR guidelines, which do not include mints and trees.
Okay, so, um, yes, I'm accepting it. And do you want to speak to it, Tom? Is that what you asked?
Yeah, yeah.
By council member two?
Yes, but I wanted to clarify what is CI. Where is cell one C? Is that on page one ninety of the staff report?
Yes, this is the first condition of approval.
Under the planning division, right? One C? Okay, that's fine with me. And then, yes, that's okay. But if, if I may comment on council member Niss's change on letter A. So we want to make sure the basement depth of eight feet in, includes the exterior wall. So it's very clear that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Vice Mayor, anything else?
Yeah, so again, just to make these conditions clear, the one, one C, the final sentence says, all recommendations from the arborist report should be followed. Some of those were explicitly listed in the conditions of approval stuff or not. So just for clarity, my little I there is saying, you know, make sure they're all explicit in conditions of approval. Condition number thirty, again, I think this was mentioned in the arborist report, but, and again, we've heard, we've heard about, you know, issues where maybe a contractor is doing things during the day. So it was, uh, or number thirty says for the duration of hand demolition within the T Z, uh, the arborist should make daily visit. Uh, it's really suggesting the arborist, uh, be on site. And then thirty-two, there was a tree appraisal period of five years. That's, I think it's very short for a tree of this size and age. And so, uh, again, just to clarify what my motion is here, would be to make that go from five to ten years. Which is real, still a pretty small percentage of the tree's life.
Okay, um, all right, I'm gonna do a quick time check. It's eleven-ten, folks. Uh, do you think we're gonna get to the utility recs?
May I ask a question, please?
Ho, ho, hold on, hold on one minute. Um, please, whoever that was, I'm sorry. I don't think we're gonna get to number. What number is it anyways? The next item, number three. Can't even get to number three in a council meeting. How do the rest of you feel? I see Phil Seth nodding no. Council members?
Ask your question again.
Do you think we're gonna get to number three, or should we let staff and our utilities commissioners go for the night? It's eleven-ten. I think we have a ways to go on this project.
It'd be kinder to let them go.
Okay, are we in agreement? We are going to push out number three?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure everyone's all right with that. Um, let me really apologize to utility staff and also our commissioners for sticking around so long. I really apologize on behalf of the council that we have to delay your item because it's also, uh, important business for the city. Okay, um, next up is council member Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. I'd like to make a substitute motion. I'd like to move the staff recommendation that we uphold the planning and development services director's approval of the application file number eighteen PLN dash zero zero three three nine.
Okay, so that's the staff recommendation?
It is. With no modifications.
Seconded.
Seconded by council member Phil Seth. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Briefly. This is a quasi judicial matter. I have reviewed, um, all of the staff, uh, work provided. I have reviewed all of the arborist, uh, work that was provided. I feel comfortable, uh, making the findings that are required. And I believe that staff has fully answered all of the questions with respect to the tree health, which again, is not a part of the individual review guidelines.
Thank you. And council member Phil Seth?
So I, so, 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 so I, I more or less agree with, uh, with that and, uh, you know, we're supposed to be looking at the, the individual review, uh, process here, um, not you know, banning dewatering or something like that. Uh, I actually still have a, a couple of questions. And I guess I'll ask one in a second here, uh, for the city arborist, but it seems to me like, remember we got three arborists here, but it seems to me like I actually heard pretty violent agreement between them, right? Which is that, it kind of depends on the soil, right? If the soil is very dense and thick, then the roots are going to be shallow. And so if the soil is sort of loose, then they're likely to go deeper. But, and, and I actually thought I heard violent agreement on that, right? But, but the only one that's actually looked at the soil is the city arborist, Walter. Everybody else is sort of going, well, in this case, this. So, uh, I'm uncomfortable with the direction this is going because I feel like there's a whole lot of sort of us who are non-scientists all arguing about science. We don't know because we don't. Right? And so that makes me a little uncomfortable. And I also feel like we're sort of council sort of trying to start, you know, modifying the architecture of the house right now. And we're sort of doing some design work here. And that sort of makes me a little bit nervous too, right? But that said, I am, I, I'm still sort of nervous about the tree because, you know, that's the whole point here, right? So I want to ask a question of the arborist. Suppose we're wrong, okay? Suppose actually it turns out there are some roots that go deep because, you know, maybe the soil is thick, but maybe there's some like really, really tough, strong roots that have gone deep and so forth. So if during the process of construction, we drop the water table from ten to fifteen feet, I think somebody said for three months. If there are roots that go down that deep, how big a threat to the tree is that? Is that a little threat or is it a big threat?
And are you referring to the city's arborist?
Yeah, I am, please. Mr. Passmore.
Good, thank you. So it's, it's very unlikely that, that roots would be consistently drawing water from that depth, especially during the full term of construction. There, there may be some incidents that they could be absorbing water at that depth, but there would be many fewer roots at that depth. So the impact would be fairly minimal. With any construction process, we, we never predict zero impact. We're just saying that the impact is tolerable by the tree and it would not significantly change its health or longevity.
And I just for the record did want to say that our understanding is that the applicant's arborist did review the soils report and we heard from the soil engineer this afternoon, the appellant's arborist, um, did not review the soils information.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. That's helpful. So let me further ask. Suppose against all probability, we actually should find out that, oh, actually there are some roots that go down that deep. Suppose during we, we do that. You know, this is probably a stupid question, but could we water the tree? In order to compensate for something like that, if we were to find something like that, go over to the other side of the house where there's no construction going on and so forth or something, is that a possibility? Are there remedies if we should find that out?
So the, the answer is yes, and that's already explained in the arborist report that supplemental water will be provided as needed. And they're also doing, uh, the, the treatments to enhance new root growth in the area that is being protected. I don't know if everyone picked that up, uh, from the applicant's arborist report, uh, when.
I didn't, so thanks.
Landham was talking.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, you know, it, it seems to me like staff has done a fairly thorough job. I mean, everybody here is worried about the tree. Right? And that's where the focus should be, you know? And so, but it seems to me like staff's done a pretty thorough job on this and we're sort of on the dewatering thing, we're concerned about something that nobody really knows if it exists or not. It actually doesn't look that likely, but we don't know, so we're afraid of it, right? So, uh, so, yeah, I think, I think all things considered, I, I think, I think the substitute motion is the one that I, I feel more comfortable supporting. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, I'll go to the other members in a moment. I just haven't had a chance to speak yet. So I'll be supporting the substitute motion. Um, I am able to make the individual review findings and can concur with staff on that and this project's, uh, compliance of the municipal code, including our, our tree codes. As council member Phil Seth just mentioned, you know, obviously we are concerned about the tree, its health and longevity. But I actually think staff's approach here is the right one in terms of daily visits, uh, some s- s- specific construction measures to keep the tree safe. Um, and monitoring, I think those are the right things to do. I'm also worried about us redesigning on the fly. Uh, just lifting a basement up two feet has a whole bunch of effects on the rest of the IR process. And I actually think that would be an enormous disservice to other community members and staff who have engaged with IR process for a while. And you know, suddenly the building is two feet taller, cast shade in different areas, has different windows and privacy concerns. I don't think we should privilege an area outside of the IR process to negatively, potentially negatively impact areas inside the IR process. In short, uh, you know, this comes down to me as, as the applicant has followed the rules and I think we should follow them as well. So I'll be supporting the substitute. Um, I see a couple of hands. I hope we're not going to have a whole series of amendments and counter amendments, but let's see where this goes. Uh, Vice Mayor DeBois.
Yeah, so speaking to the substitute motion, I would make the same, uh, friendly amendment made to the other motion to modify the conditions of approval.
So you're talking letters, little I, little double I.
Vice Mayor, I confess to being confused by that because it looks like they're already included. I'm on package page one ninety, planning division one, special conditions. What, what is it that is not included in the conditions of approval?
Uh, you're talking about my letter I?
Yes.
There were quite a few actually, so if you go to pages, uh.
I'm in last week's packet. That's where this was, right? ID one-one-four-one-one, page one ninety.
Yeah, so last week's packet.
Yeah, that's it. That's the one I'm looking at.
If you go to packet page, uh.
I think the clerk has it on the screen.
I give his twenty-two-two-three, two-two-four, which is the what that refers to.
You would like letter C here incorporated into the conditions of approval.
The letter, letter C is in the conditions of approval. And the second sentence there says, all recommendations from the arborist report shall be followed. Uh, but only some of those recommendations are then listed in the conditions of approval, so.
Yeah, I under, I understand your point, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to accept that. I, I think this is very clear that they have to follow all the recommendations.
So, I mean, you asked what was missing. There's quite a few things that are missing. Some are mentioned in the conditions of approval.
But a condition of approval is that they all have to be followed, so.
Is, is that staff's understanding that let, letter C here where it says all recommendations from the arborist report shall be followed mean that those recommendations in the arborist report must be followed in the same way as if they were incorporated as, uh, conditions of approval themselves?
Yes, that is our understanding and the arborist report itself is part of the project plans. So that will be part of the job copy that's on site. And so it will be visible to the contractors.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, does that satisfy your first one?
No, I mean, there were some pretty big ones I think should be made explicit, but that, that was only one of the points. The other two are.
Okay, can we go back to the main motion? I'll look at the other ones.
And staff to just say that letter C incorporates all the recommendations.
Yeah, so I, I decline to accept CI. C two, so this is actually confusing because condition thirty does say that the arborist will be on site every day to conduct the visit. Are you asking that they be on site all day, every day during the demolition?
Yes, during demolition.
So for the whole workday is what you're saying?
Yes.
Could someone from Public Works or perhaps Urban Forestry describe, um, what is envisioned in the daily visit? How, how long? I know we've never done this before, but so let's say we have an arborist come to make a daily visit. Is that twenty minutes? Is that two hours? What, what does that entail?
Those inspections are done at milestone events and anything that's especially sensitive. They would spend as much time as needed to inspect those activities. There might not be activities going on for most of the day that would require arborist supervision, so it's, it's, it's left somewhat flexible.
To add to that, demolition will include more than just, you know, digging and excavation work because there's obviously the home itself that's existing to remove, which will be subject to the deconstruction ordinance that council passed is in effect as well. So some activities may not engage in the ground with the tree roots, but as Mr. Passmore indicated earlier, if a root, for example, was found, um, there might be watering that would be need to be made and that might be something the arborist would see and then ensure that the watering is occurring for those roots that might have been found, um, or other items.
Okay, and Mr. Passmore, in your opinion, do you think that a visit each day would be sufficient to detect and ameliorate any potential damage? Or do you feel that the tree would be better protected if an arborist was on site all day, every day?
Just during demolition.
So thi- this is far beyond conditions that I have ever known us to issue. You know, more inspection is obviously better and that's what we're trying to derive from, from this daily inspection condition.
Okay, but you feel that the daily inspection visit is sufficient to protect the health of this particular tree?
Yes, and just to elaborate, uh, we have very few violations of conditions of approval.
Okay, so I'm, I understand and appreciate your intent, Mr. Vice Mayor, but I, I think listening to the expert, I'm, I'm not inclined to accept that. Um, with three, I'm happy to accept that the tree appraisal duration be ten years if my second tour would do the same.
I agree.
Great.
Okay, so.
So.
Triple little I is incorporated into the motion.
Yes, I'll make C I into unfriendly amendment.
Okay, and the vice mayor is moving little I and double little I as unfriendly amendments. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. I don't believe we need to speak to it unless you'd like to, Mr. Vice Mayor.
No.
Council member Koo.
Um, I really believe that having an arborist on site, it was something that I had brought up earlier, that they can remedy anything that, uh, and keep an eye on the contractors as they're working. And once, one C, I already talked about little I.
Can the clerk, uh, please clear the hands for me? I've just, uh, I've got these written down, but for folks to speak on the unfriendly amendment. Um, I'll go quickly. So little I incorporating one C, I think it's redundant but not harmful, but somewhat disrespectful of what staff has just mentioned. And that, that is exactly how they understand it. And so I think we don't need that one. As for double I, making the arborist on site all the time during demolition, uh, I think that's really unreasonable on the property owner and the applicant here. As, as our, uh, arborist mentioned, you know, even daily visits is, is far above what we do on a standard project. Uh, having them on site all the time, even when, you know, they're doing something like tearing down the other side of the house, seems completely unreasonable to me and an imposition. Council member Tanaka.
I have a question for staff.
I have a question for staff. So staff mentioned that you've guys have done ground penetrating radar for one project. And one question for you is, how much, how much does that cost, is it like? Like, any idea of like, I'm check, like, is that, it's like $2,000, is it like $20,000? It's like $200, what, what, what does this cost?
I don't have a price, I don't know if Walter maybe does, but it is very expensive, especially for a single family home. Walter?
Very rough ballpark, maybe $5,000. And there's a limited amount of discovery, as I said, you know, ground penetrating radar is, is effective to, to five feet, and it gets less effective the deeper you go.
Yeah, someone just emailed me saying that it's only about $2,000, but I wasn't sure if that's true or not. But, okay, and could it, I mean, I realize it's only five feet, but as they dig, can they utilize it to kind of, you know, see ahead of time, like whether this could be okay or not? Because, I mean, I think the, the root of the matter, are the roots, right? Like, where, where are the roots? And so can they, let's, let's say it is two to five, ten, two to $5,000, right? Could they do that, because maybe if, if they do the ground penetration radar and there's no roots, well heck, then we should be okay, right? And if there are roots, then they stop, right, and they have to go to plan B or something. But I'm just trying to understand the feasibility and practicality of that.
Well, the feasibility is that, I mean, I think part of the challenge we're wrestling is that this is an IR hearing, but what's the tree and the basement are not subject to that hearing, and so as council is considering the appeal and approving the project, I think it would be unusual to have it be appealed, and if this happens, then do this, and if this happens, then do that. That would be a unusual scenario and difficult for the applicant to move forward with their next steps in the process. Probably have to continue the matter were that to be the, the will of the council, which I'm not sure that is the goal of the body this evening.
I mean, you, you have to be continued because you're saying that the radar would have to be done, and then, and then based on the results of the radar. Well, let me ask you this. Because I've actually never heard of using radar to look at tree roots, so this is actually kind of interesting idea, so. So i- is that a safe assumption if you don't see radars in the first five feet, that you're not going to see roots below that, or how does it work?
I'm sorry, it's, it's most accurate at shallow depths, but it, it can detect roots, you know, 20 feet deep. We, uh, we had a analysis done on El Palo Alto and, and had some findings from the technology is, as deep as I think 20 feet from the surface. So it's, it's possible to detect some, some of those other roots, it's just the accuracy diminishes the deeper you go.
We have a lot of debate where the roots are.
To please focus on the amendment on the floor, if possible, Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to see if there's a, if there's an easier way, because it is excessive, but the trees are important, so I understand why, why, why there's a need on this, but, okay, I'll, I'll, I'm done for now, thank you.
Mayor, fine, I'm not sure where you're going next, but I know that the applicant had tried to ask a question, and the motion has changed significantly, you may consider hearing from them.
Good, good suggestion, thank you. Let's actually do that right now, and then I'll go to councilmembers Phil Seth and councilmembers Niss. If the applicant would like to speak, just a quick summary, councilmembers Cormac and Phil Seth have moved to reject the appeal and uphold the approval of your project. And we're right now discussing an amendment by the Vice Mayor, as you can see, letters A and B. If the applicant has any comments on this motion and the amendment, we would appreciate it.
Ms. Dow and Ms. Pavlovic, if you have any questions or comments regarding the amendment, you can come off mute and make those now.
Yes, I've been trying to talk, but I was muted. Yes, I would like to point out that the present depth of the basement anticipating is nine, not 10 feet. I also discussed before the meeting with Jody whether it would be possible to go six inches above the present height of the house to facilitate lessening the depth of the basement. But I also would like to point out to our statement earlier that by bringing in the next phase of the project, while we are applying for the building permit, structural engineer, and new soil borings, we will definitely explore the possibility, and we are aiming not to do the de-watering and to minimize de-watering to the maximum. So I would like to understand from your motion, are you proposing basement to be eight feet maximum to the bottom of the foundation or the height of the ceiling of the basement?
That is no longer the, the prevalent or prevailing motion. But if, if councilmembers Niss and Koo would like to answer that question, please, please go for it.
I think, I think the applicant is asking what will be the height in the basement? I don't know, we, we have, we tried to add two feet, they said, um, one, one foot was all that could work at the ground level. Are you aware of that, because you're, we're on a different motion than, than maybe what you're addressing?
If we could clarify to the applicant and their architect that right now the council is considering approving the project without that change, with only these, these minor changes that are listed on the screen, and if this suggestion from council does not pass, then council will, will return to that other item, and you'll get a chance to talk then, if that's okay with Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, city attorney, so to the applicant, sorry for taking us on a tangent.
Yes, I see that now on the screen, my internet was gone for a while, so thank you, you answered my question.
Okay, and, and do you have any comments on letters A and B here?
I'm trying to read as we. Change the condition thirty to arborist site on the, of the arborist's site daily.
Then letter B, ma'am, would be that the arborist would be on site throughout the duration of the day during the demolition period, instead of a daily visit. And letter.
Yes, yes, that would be fine, thank you.
And letter A would be to add, uh, letter one C of the conditions of approval would incorporate the comments from the arborist letter that are required.
And then the only other change is the tree appraisal duration will be at 10 years, not five. Okay, a- a- any last comments, or should I return to council?
Yes, that would be fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have councilmember Phil Seth, then Niss, and we're speaking hopefully to the amendment.
All right, well, just briefly on the, on the, having the arborist on site full time. You know, I mean, you guys have ever done this stuff, okay? I mean, the construction crews, I mean, they're doing some of this stuff today, some different stuff tomorrow, as people have said, some days they're not there, okay? Some days they, they're there, some days they're not, and so forth. Yeah, I, I, the, the principle here is, you don't want them to uncover, you know, a big, a big stash of roots and do something without sort of the arborist sort of being there to take a look at it, right? So like, that's, that's what you want, but having the arborist on site nine to five for the whole duration of demolition, I mean, that's, that's a big waste of Walter's time. So, I'm not, I'm not sure that's a good idea.
I think we probably should clarify, I don't believe that it would be Mr. Passmore on site, it would be that the, the applicant would have to hire their own third party person to be there all day, every day during that duration. That's my understanding of what this letter B means.
Okay. Big, but still a big waste of somebody's time.
Well, it would be a great expense in time.
Yep, okay, councilmember Niss.
So I'm going to support the amendment. And let's just make a side comment. While I realize this is an IR, it came to us tonight because of the tree. And there's no question that there's great concern about the tree, and there's no question that whomever bought this knew that there was a tree problem. Done.
Thank you. Councilmember Cormac.
So I'd love the city attorney to just help clarify that last comment from councilmember Niss. Are neighbors allowed to appeal an IR based on trees?
So it, that, that issue is not contained within our IR process, but the city has not, doesn't have a clear process and has not traditionally followed a rule of simply rejecting those appeals, rather they are accepted and processed, and then the recommendation is denial because they're not contained within the, the parameters of the process that the city has set up. And, and it could be done differently, there could be a procedural, a clear procedural requirement that the appeal fall within the parameters of the program being appealed, in which case we wouldn't have gotten this far tonight.
Thank you.
So just, so the parameters for an appeal are broader than the IR guidelines?
They're not. They're not, it's more that, that this, the city of Palo Alto traditionally provides a lot of process to interested members of the public, and I think in the spirit of that, this appeal was processed even though it does not fall within an appealable subject under the program.
Okay. Interesting, thank you. Councilmembers Niss and Koo, do you really need to speak to this, or can we vote on the amendment?
I, I actually do have to speak to it, you know, based on what our city attorney said. So staff would just, so when there's an appellant come in, they're going to be paying $595 to appeal something, and if staff takes it, they're, they are saying that we will look at this problem or this appeal. If, if it's not something that we can determine or make a, a judgment on, we should have not taken this appeal, we should have explained to the appellant and not taken their $595 in order to go through this whole process. So, so that's why we are discussing it here today, because staff took the money and took the application for the appeal. So I, I really have an issue with that when we take people's money and then not, and then say, we can't decide on that after everything is said and done. So that's one comment, but then for this substitute motion, I would also like to see if I might get a friendly amendment in, and and that is.
We, we, we actually can't, can't table that at the moment, we have an amendment to the substitute on the table.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to suggest we vote on this amendment by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Koo. First, I have councilmember Niss.
Yes.
Councilmember Koo.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac.
No.
Vice Mayor DeBois.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
No.
And myself is a no. Okay, that amendment passes on a four to three vote to amend the substitute motion, so it's incorporated therein, councilmember Koo.
Yes, I'd like to make a amendment, hopefully it's friendly. And that is to add what councilmember Tanaka had mentioned, why, since there's so much questions about the root system, to add in there that, what is that radar thing? To do the radar detecting study.
Okay, there's an amendment to do a radar detecting study by councilmember Koo.
Uh, the pen, the ground penetrating radar study, so then we can remove any doubt where the roots are and how deep or shallow they are.
Is there a second?
Well, she's making it as a friendly amendment, so. May I respond? Okay, great. So, uh, councilmember Koo, what exactly would you envision, what, what would be the result of the study?
Determine where, how deep the roots are, if they're shallow or deep, and where are the, I don't know what the radar is going to find out, but maybe where the water, water level is at, and whatever this radar thing discovers.
Okay.
Settle the question about what the arborists are all having different opinions on.
And then what, what would any, what would we or the applicant do with that?
It would also help determine the building permit process, what is needed.
Could staff comment on how if this would be handled procedurally? If, if we did that?
He's only done it once from what we know, so I'm not sure, Walter, how we know what we would do with the outcomes of it. Again, I would emphasize that if it did show that most of the roots are shallow, and the radar didn't show that there were deeper roots, there could still be deeper roots, just not shown on the radar, as the roots would be mainly within the area, which staff have already applied, the four feet deep, the radar goes five feet reliably. So it may only confirm what we already think we know, and not really disconfirm that there are or are not deeper roots. And then again, only a portion of the root system of the entire tree is being disturbed. We do estimate that portion is less than 25%, around 17%. But Walter, if you know how the radar may or may not impact the development of the building permit and the further plans for this project, I'd love to hear it, if you don't know, because we've only done it once, I think that's fine too.
So just very quickly, we would only be assessing roots within that building footprint, and usually we do that before we approve a final design, so if we discovered significant number of, of roots, then we would really need to evaluate the remainder of the tree protection zone to discover if, if that constitutes a significant impact to the tree or not. You know, that it would be significant delay to the project and possibly cause us staff to, you know, make big changes in the design.
Okay, thank you, that's very helpful, and I, I respectfully decline to include that.
Councilmember Koo, would you like to seek an unfriendly amendment?
Why not?
Because it's 11:45, but. Okay, there's an unfriendly amendment, and do we have the language for it to do a ground penetrating radar study? Is that the language, councilmember Koo?
Yes, for staff to perform, or for staff to, no, for the applicant to perform a ground penetrating radar study.
Okay, is there a second for that? Seeing none, I believe the unfriendly amendment fails. Anything else, councilmember Koo?
No, thank you.
Okay. Let's please clear the board, we're back to the substitute motion, and given the hour, I'm going to suggest we vote on it. Any last comments? Okay, moving down our list, so on the substitute, excuse me, motion as amended, councilmember Koo.
No.
Councilmember Tanaka.
No.
Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeBois.
No.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Councilmember Niss.
No.
Okay. That fails. Uh, on a, sorry, let me, sorry. That motion, the substitute motion as amendment, as amended fails on a three to four vote with Vice Mayor DeBois, Councilmembers Niss, Councilmember Koo and Tanaka against. So we now return to the main motion. Can we go back up to that one? So this is the main motion to do letters A, B, and then all of letters C had been incorporated into the substitute motion. So I think we can all see some of the support in there. Ms. Tanner, I see your hand.
Um, at the risk of continuing this topic, I do have to ask about letter A. Um, I think the applicant was also speaking to that. I think we, I, I just, again, as we're, we're trying to assess and redesign the project in real time, it's a little challenging to understand, you know, the depth of the interior versus the exterior wall and still trying to get a full basement where people could stand. Um, I just, I'm not sure that the eight feet plus one does it, but if there's clarity about.
Oh.
I think, I think part, hold on, Councilmember Niss. I, I think part of the confusion is council doesn't understand it either, and we're trying to design this on the fly.
Perhaps if we could clarify that we can have at least the eight feet interior of the basement, which would give it a full height and then the exterior would be, you know, enveloping that eight.
I was just, just going to add that and, and continue the one foot above ground if necessary.
Okay, can we update letter A to reflect that language, please? And then I, I'd like to go to the applicant briefly. So to the applicant, uh, we are back on this motion that you see in front of you, uh, which is reducing the basement depth to eight feet, which includes the exterior wall and allow the above-ground addition of one foot in total dimension. It's adding, adding a series of recommendations from Catherine Martinot, uh, written here in letter, in letter B and letter C were the conditions, which in a previous motion you had agreed to. So ideally, let's try to focus on the special letters A and B, but if, if the applicant has.
I, I thought Councilmember Niss was accepting eight-foot interior. I thought it was.
Let's, let's get the, the language right in letter A, please. Ms. Tanner, Councilmember Niss and to the clerk.
So I believe it's an eight-foot ceiling height. Is that what we're?
Yes, that's correct. However, you want to put it, so at least you can stand up inside.
Yeah, so it would be an eight-foot ceiling and that eight feet, one foot could be above grade.
Yes. Because they didn't want any more than that, apparently.
To meet the IR guidelines, yes.
Right.
Okay. Um, and then to our applicant, um, if you'd like to comment on this, uh, please do so.
Hi, yes, as long as we have clear eight-foot ceilings, not the exterior wall as the council stated, I think we will be able to go and fulfill IR guidelines. So I just want to make sure that to those eight feet that we need to add additional three or four feet for the excavation as it was stated earlier. Is that clear to everybody?
If, if I understand correctly, this is actually nine-foot ceilings, right? With eight underground and one above ground? No?
No, no. No, I'm going to say an eight. What I'm concerned about is, is you're talking about going down 11 feet.
What I hear this saying is that it would be an eight-foot ceiling height, but only seven of those feet would be below grade. There, so seven feet, but there is still a foundation.
Yes.
And so there's the seven feet plus the thickness of the foundation.
That's my understanding. It, I hope that's correct. It's harder to deal at midnight than in the light of day.
If I might add, perhaps, uh, what Councilmember Niss is referring to is to minimize the necessity of dewatering, which again, I think the applicant is also.
Exactly. Thanks, thanks for jumping in precisely. It doesn't need to be in the motion, but that's, that's precisely the intent.
Any other comments from the applicant?
I just want to restate that we would love to not to dewater the project and that we will find out about it in the next stage, if you would allow us to go forward with it because before it's really impossible to find out about it. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, thank you for those comments. Okay, um, back to council. We are now speaking to the motion as amended. Uh, councilmembers Tanaka, Niss and then Cormac.
Uh, so, uh, let me talk about the ground fitting. Let me make a motion for the ground penetrating radar. So, uh, you know, I think in general, we should try to use technology when possible. And while it may not be perfect, it's better than a total guess right now. And so what I'd like to do is propose a friendly amendment that we do the ground penetrating radar. And if it looks like there's no roots down there, then I think the project can complete, can go forward as is. Otherwise, then I think what, um, has been proposed here would have to, have to be done to protect the tree. So I was wondering if the maker and seconder are willing to accept that.
Would, would you be willing to just make it a straightforward? Yes, let's do the radar without any of the, here's what could happen afterward?
Well, I guess, I guess if the radar show nothing's, nothing's wrong, then I mean, then all this is a lot of worry about nothing, right? But if radar showed there's roots down there, then we got to do that.
Let's do it first while we're still worrying. So add that as, as E. I don't know what we call it, ground penetrating radar, is that the right word?
If, if I might.
Councilmember Tanaka, can you get the language that you'd want for the applicant to perform a ground penetrating radar study? Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, but I think the purpose, well, I, I guess I have to look at the maker and seconder for guidance on this because, you know, for me, the purpose of doing the ground penetrating radar is see where the roots, where the heck the roots are, right? And the roots are there, then we want to be super careful, right? Probably what, what is on this motion makes sense. But if the roots aren't there, right? Um, if the roots aren't there or, um, well, I'll say this, if, if the roots are there, absolutely. If the roots might be there, I think this probably makes sense too. And the roots aren't there, then we're probably okay, right? So it seemed to me that you would use that, that, that information, which it sounds like it's going to cost two to $5,000 to do, would be a useful thing to do, to know. To know which route to do. Now, I realize that this complicates things a bit, but they would give, they'll give the project two routes. And doesn't he come back to us if it looks like the radar is saying that there's a problem here? I think this is what has to go, right? What, what's on this, what's written here? And then if, if, if there shows, it looks like there's no problems, then, um, then I mean, it seems like the original can make sense, right? But maybe I'd love to hear the, the maker and seconder's opinion on this and whether they would accept it or not.
Yeah. Uh, Councilmembers Niss and Koo, will you accept letter D?
So. I'm sorry.
I think it's gotten complex, Greg. Perhaps if you want to say to perform ground penetrating radar study, but I, I don't want to make a decision now as to what we would do with the end product.
The only problem is what the mayor said earlier is what do we do with it?
Well, in that case, then maybe we don't need to bother with it.
Yeah. Okay, so is it not accepted?
So, so I just want to say that, you know, the applicant has just, uh, also mentioned and reassured us that they were going to minimize on the dewatering. The whole reason we were, I was actually pushing for the ground penetrating radar earlier was because there might have been, there, I wasn't assured about no dewatering. And given that the roots, we don't know whether the shallow roots are looking for water or the deep roots are looking for groundwater, which is why the ground penetrating radar. But since they have reassured, Ms. Palov had just come on and said that they are going to try not to dewater one or try to minimize as much as possible the dewatering. I mean, I would actually feel better to put that into this motion versus the ground penetrating because if, if they agree to it, it, it doesn't, it, it isn't a concern then. Correct me if I'm wrong. Do you, Liz, do you understand it the same way?
I, I'm thinking maybe we should not just, maybe just eliminate it because it doesn't seem to have the end product well enough established or well enough.
So Councilmember Niss, is that you were?
I'm saying no.
Okay. Councilmember Tanaka, your amendment is.
Thank you.
Sorry, Greg. It's midnight and I'm, I'm just not thinking that's going to make a great difference long term.
11:59. Uh, Councilmember Niss, I see your hand up, but I believe you've already spoken to this. I'm just going to jump in really quickly. I won't be able to support this for a couple of reasons. I think, uh, letters B, we haven't evaluated, although I have enormous respect for Ken and B and Ms. Martinot. A lot of that's unevaluated. Letter A is particularly troubling to me. As I said before, I think it's really dangerous for us to redesign and re-architect a project, uh, at midnight when none of us are architects or design people. Um, and to, to ask staff a question, does letter A re-trigger an IR process? How, how does that even get incorporated?
There are minor changes, um, that can be done, um, as part of the building review process. This change here is being done at a council hearing. So the public has had an opportunity to review it. But maybe the city attorney can address that further if needed.
I mean, I, I don't mean to challenge that in the way, you know, the, the public hasn't really had a chance and the neighbors, you know, haven't had a chance to evaluate a project, which is, you know, now one foot taller next to them. And any comments from the city attorney, like, is, is this risking kind of like a circular IR process?
It. I, I, I appreciate the concern. I, um, the, these review processes that are done by staff are done carefully in an office environment over many hours and days. And, um, it's, it is of concern to add new things like this and make changes in a project without really an opportunity to fully understand all the ways in which it kind of flows through the project and what the input of the various parties might be. I would encourage council not to consider this to be, um, a new restart on this project, however. Otherwise, we will be back with another IR process. And, um, you know, I think this was intended to be a process that's fairly light, that allows neighbors to be able to work together and, and kind of come up with some minor changes that allow then single-family homes to be built without a lot of intensive review and involvement. Um, and we're way past that on this one already, um, with good reason because of the significant tree. So, um, what I understand from what staff said is it's minor enough that the change can be made without reopening the process. And I would, um, I would advise that you consider it to be final and just subject to implementation and not further appeal.
Okay, thanks, that's helpful. Just my final comment, as we really started this meeting, um, a few hours ago with this item. You know, the IR process exists for a number of reasons. Trees and basements are not part of that. If we would like to include those in future IR projects, we can certainly, um, update our IR guidelines in the process. I think it's unfair to do it in this ad hoc fashion on a single project where there are pertinent and significant concerns with the tree. Certainly, but, uh, as I said earlier, the applicant followed the rules and I think we should do. I see Councilmember Tanaka, Cormac and Niss, but, uh, Councilmember Tanaka, I'm going to go to Cormac and Niss first since they haven't spoken yet on this round. Is that okay? Councilmember Cormac.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Fine. Let me just make sure I understand. Letter A, is it, is it staff's understanding that this would require the applicant to redesign their building?
No, this is just the building, uh, being risen up one foot out of the ground.
Okay, so that wouldn't be additional expense or work for them to do, A?
Uh, no, it's probably, I would assume, less expense, less, less excavation.
I think that if you're referring to the expense of the redesigning the plans, you would need to ask the applicant what expenses they would incur for changing this.
Correct. Okay.
Imagine there would be some expense for redesigning, redrawing their plans.
Okay.
Would be.
That's fine, thank you. Um, and, um, then, okay, so I'll go in order. I have said, every time this is, you know, one of these has come up, um, I'm not comfortable designing from the dais. I realize we're not sitting in a dais anymore. We're all sitting in our homes, um, staring at computers, but, um, I don't think it's appropriate for us to redesign something. Especially something that is following all the rules. So I can't support A. Um, with respect to B, I'm the one who brought it up, but I was greatly reassured by Mr. Passmore's response and the fact that this would be addressed in the building permits and that it seemed doable. So I see no reason for it to be in there. And then with C, I still feel that C too is really an unnecessary expense. And, um, the sum of these makes me feel like this process is not, is, has not, has not fair. And this is a quasi judicial, um, hearing. I believe that the applicant has followed the rules. I believe that the staff, as Councilmember Phil Seth said, has taken into very serious consideration all the concerns about the tree and that they are mitigated. So I'm not going to be able to support this.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Tanaka and then Koo.
Yeah, um, I just thought that what the city attorney said, um, makes sense in terms of making sure this is final. Otherwise, it will trigger the IR again. So I, I guess, city attorney, what do you recommend we put in this motion? Or is it declared already that this is not going to, that we're not going to get an infinite loop here on, on the process?
I think that your, um, language that says, uh, approve the project with the following conditions.
Is that ready?
Creates that finality.
Okay, then that's fine, thank you.
Councilmember Koo.
So, um, I actually think that based, I mean, Councilmember Tanaka and, um, the city attorney has basically said it, we did approve the project with the following conditions. And I, um, I don't really think we are redesigning. I actually don't think we're redesigning the project. The applicant, Ms. Palov, actually did say at an earlier comment that they were actually looking for nine-foot depth and six inches above present height. So if that's the case, then they're going to have to go back and redraw their plans unless it's already drawn. But, you know, with this, we're ensuring, uh, we're addressing the appeal because there was an appeal to the, uh, project and it could have gone accordingly. It could have followed all the rules. But then the, the, my point is that there is still the basement and the tree that was mentioned in this report with the conditions. So I feel like we did need to address the appeal since it was accepted by staff and brought to, brought towards, brought to us. And every time we go through ministerial, uh, ministerial approvals, this can happen. And this can come to, um, before council. So, and at that point, yes, we will have. before council. So and at that point, yes, we will have to decide on what comes to us. So obviously, I am going to support this.
Thank you. And councilmember Philseth?
Yeah, well, so I'm not going to support it. I think B is actually useful. I think C is, it doesn't add much value. And A, you know, either the project, either the tree isn't sensitive to building a basement because the roots are shallow, in which case A is all we're doing is, is changing their design for them, right? Or it is sensitive to dewatering, which is unlikely, but it is sensitive, in which case A isn't going to make much difference anyway. So I'm going to, I'm not going to support this.
Thank you. Just before we vote, I do, I know it's after midnight, do want to go to the applicant one last time. See if you have any comments on this, any reactions, comments or requests. It seems like this is the motion council is going to go with. So I want to invite you for any, any last thoughts.
Thank you for all your thoughts. I would like to, I would like you to know that it took me a year to consider all the rules, requirements and go back and forth with the city. I, as much as I appreciate the input, I can only watch that we are going to do what is best for the tree. And that I cannot tell you what the changes that you suggest would do to the project till I actually go back and look at every aspect of the code. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that and thank you for your patience. Okay. Let's vote on this motion as amended. Approve the project with the following conditions, A, B and C, starting with councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac?
No.
Vice Mayor DuBois?
Yes.
Councilmember Philseth?
Nope.
Myself is a no. Councilmember Niss? Councilmember Niss? I think you're on mute.
Yes.
Councilmember Koo?
Yes.
Okay, that passes on a four to three vote with councilmembers Cormac, Philseth and myself voting no. Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you to the applicant, the appellant and all our members of the public who have stuck with us to 12:10. That concludes our action calendar for the night. Leaving us with councilmember questions, comments and announcements, councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. Two things about Bosca and then I have a question about the airplane roundtable. So as you all know, I'm on the Board Policy Committee of the Bay Area Water Supply Conservation Agency. One of the things we've been contemplating was whether or not to participate in the expansion of Los Vaqueros, which is a storage project in the East Bay. It'd been floating around for a couple of years and I just want you to know the Board Policy Committee has recommended that Bosca not continue going forward with that. But the SFPUC do so. I'm happy to take any questions if people have them. And then second, you know, during these power outages and fires, we did receive a message from the general manager of Bosca today. And I want to assure people that the water supply is functioning during the power outages. We do have, SFPUC does have backup generators that are working and are being refueled. And critical SFPUC facilities are not at risk from the Marsh complex fire, which you may have read about in Alameda County. And then I know that there was a roundtable today and in the event that councilmember Koo attended or has an update, it looked like the agenda had a ton of reports. So if there's any information you can send on the, that, that'd be great.
Thanks, councilmember Cormac. Glad to know that the water is still flowing. Any other updates, questions, comments? I just want to say thank you to the city manager. I pinged him last week about some of the, the notices I was seeing about mailboxes being removed and he looked into it with the local postmaster and I think we're all relieved. They are not currently planning, they were planning to remove 70% of Palatus post boxes. That's been delayed for a number of months. So potentially something we have to reengage with in the winter. And again, thank you to the city manager and Congresswoman Eschew for her leadership on that. Anything else? All right, I think we are adjourned. It's 12:13. I hope you all stay cool. Cheers. Bye.